Welcome, everyone, to today's Town of Chatham zoning board of appeals meeting. The date is October 22nd, 2020. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter. For scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device, if anybody else is recording the meeting, please let us know. pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 23rd, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather at one place, this meeting of the Chatham zoning board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, and then when you're asked the conference ID number, you would put in 341-460-712, and then hit the pound sign. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So first of all, we need to have a roll call of all the board members. This is to authorize having this meeting in this format. So I will start, and please give your full name. Dave Veach.
David H. Veach, present.
Paul. Not yet. Happy.
Happy Van Sickle, present.
James M. Upson.
Dennis.
Dennis Sullivan, present.
Dave Thompson.
David R. Thompson, present.
Megan.
Megan Story, present.
And I am David S. Nixon. It's my great honor to be the chairman, and I am present. Also with us, as you've heard, is Sarah B. Clark. Sarah is the PPO for the town. That's the principal permitting officer, as well as the executive secretary for the zoning board of appeals. I would ask that any citizens and non-board members who participate in the call via the phone process, give their name and the last four digits of their phone number. This is for identification purposes only. The way the meeting will be conducted, Sarah will read the hearing notice. Then there will be a presentation by either the individual or their representative. Then I would call for anybody in favor of the appeal or application to speak, and they would so indicate by on the screen waving their fingers or their arm or something so that Sarah can pick you up. Then I would read any and all letters that have been received by the board. Then I would go back and ask for anyone in the audience who would like to speak against the appeal or has a specific question to do so, and again, you would need to signal. Then the applicant may very well wish to rebut some of the questions or testimony that have been given. Following that, board members would direct any questions to anyone who has presented anything.
You've got to fucking.
When that is done, we would then go into deliberation. We would take a vote to do that after closing the public hearing. We would deliberate, and then we would take a vote. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be successful, you have to get a supermajority. In our case, with five votes, you have to get four yeses to be successful. Voting today would be Dave Veach, myself, Happy Buck, and Dennis. The exception to this would be the Avalon Point, because Dave Thompson was the voter as an alternate when we left this off last month, so he would continue to do that.
Dave, this is Paul Semple. I just wanted to let you know that I've joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, so as I mentioned, all votes are taken by a roll call. It's kind of a pain, but it has to be done that way. And we thank you for your patience and being with us today. So with all that said and done, Sarah, I think we can have the first app, which is 20-055.
I will read the application, but just as a reminder, please remember to keep yourself muted unless you are wishing to speak. And use your raise hand function or wave at me if it's time to speak and you would like to. So that being said, application number 20-055, 424 Stage Harbor Road LLC, Carib William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 424 Stage Harbor Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 13B Block 5, Lot C1. The applicant seeks to in large extent interchange a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and shed and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 13.3 feet from the Westerly Abutter, 15.4 feet from Stage Harbor Road, 5.7 feet from Honeysuckle Lane, and 30.3 feet from Cedar Swamp Lane. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and then it will be located 11.7 feet from the Westerly Abutter, where a 25-foot setback is required, 15.4 feet from Stage Harbor Road, 5.7 feet from Honeysuckle Lane, and 35.9 feet from Cedar Swamp Lane, where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 827 square feet, 15.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,053 square feet, 20%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and then it contains 5,250 square feet, or 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Riley.
Good afternoon, Mr. Nixon. Bill Riley, on behalf of 424 Stage Harbor Road LLC. The property owners' principals of that LLC, Stephen Maureen Headhead, who have a home down in South Chatham, and they worked with Steve Smith on that construction. And so they partnered with him on the renovation replacement of this property as well. As you know, if you've been to the site at all, it's a very unattractive structure, and it's been abandoned, has not been lived in for several years, and it's in terrible condition. So what the Headheads would like to do is replace this structure with a new design on the plans that they've submitted. The, yeah, thank you very much, Sarah. If you have a mental image of the existing structure, you'll know that the smaller thing here is much more attractive. The existing structure has a door facing Cedar Swamp Lane. The Headheads thought this would be much more attractive if the front door faced Stage Harbor Road. So which one faced the Stage Harbor Road? While the building is larger than the existing building, it's still just 1,053 square feet. One thing to note, I mean, we are going from 15.8% to 20%, but each percent is only 52 square feet. The lot itself is only 5,250 square feet. So the, the energy sounds huge, but the, as I say, each one percent is only 52 square feet. The, the, the design, as you can tell, is very traditional. New England is nine. Peter's single side asphalt, single roof. And I think the, I think it fits very well in the neighborhood there. And the, that would be, unless you have any specific questions about it, that would be our presentation. I do have the criteria I'd be happy to review with you.
Okay, if you do that quickly, we appreciate that.
So adequacy to the size of the site in terms of the proposed use. We are, you know, increasing the 20% of lot coverage. However, I think the, because we're maintaining the same setback from Stage Harbor Road, you know, it's not an imposition on the road itself. We are going to be five feet closer to Cedar Swamp Lane. Right now, the building's 35.9 feet. And we're going to go to 30 feet. I mean theoretically, in this zone, we'd have to be 40 feet setback from Stage Harbor Road, 40 feet setback from Cedar Swamp Lane, and 25 feet from the neighbor to the west. And then, of course, another 25 feet, or pardon me, 40 feet from Honeysuckle Lane. So we could have a three-by-three outhouse there if we met all the setbacks. But I think that the, you know, given the existence of the lot, and the house is already on it, I think you could say you could find that the size is adequate for the proposed use. Compatibility of the proposed size of the whole structure with neighboring properties, you know, it's a very eclectic neighborhood in this particular area of Stage Harbor Road. Across the street, you know, there are several large, traditional Greek revival-type homes. And as you come down the road from, from town, there are some rather large impressive homes. And with the occasional medium-sized home, this will be one of the smallest homes actually fronting on Stage Harbor Road. Honeysuckle Lane and Cedar Swamp Lane do have similar-sized homes. And so to the extent, you know, we are very much compatible in terms of size of the proposed structure. The increase in non-conforming nature, well, you know, we're making minor sideline changes, but the major change, of course, is the increase in coverage from 15.8% to 20%. The, and of course, you know, increasing the living area of the structure is also considered an intensification of the non-conforming use. And I think that you could find that although there is an increase in non-conforming nature, that the proposed increases are not substantially more detrimental for the neighborhood. Suitability to the site, including that limited impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment. Here we have a situation where the lot itself is kind of at the top of a hill and quite flat. So the, we're not concerned that construction would lead to stormwater runoff onto adjoining properties. It's our obligation to keep stormwater runoff on our property. So in the, there are wetlands out at the top of the hill, but we don't believe that if we do, at the top of the hill, it's going to have any impact on them. Impact of scale, setting, and mass on the neighborhood visual character, I would say we get gold stars for that. The, say, the building has the same setback as Stage Harbor Road. I think it's a much more attractive structure, and it will certainly improve the neighborhood visual character over the existing structure. The, we're not showing a septic system there because we've been told, and they're very optimistic, that the sewer, which ends at Honeysuckle Lane, which you can see on the sight plane right behind us, is going to be continued on down to Stage Harbor in the Harbor Masters office down there. So the idea is to build this when the sewer hookup is available. So we think the, after the sewer system, it will be an improvement. We don't believe there will be any impact on traffic flow and safety, noise and litter, of course. We have adequate utilities. So that would be our presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Riley, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project? If so, please indicate now, so Sarah can see.
I see no one that would like to speak in favor.
Okay, so I will read the correspondence. The first is dated October 22nd, and it's from Michelle Clark, addressed to Sarah. "The applicant came before the historic commission, historical commission, on October 20th seeking approval for a full demolition of the dwelling located at 424 Stage Harbor Road. The commission determined that the dwelling was not historically significant because it does not meet any of the definition criteria of the bylaw. Therefore, the commission did not impose a demolition delay. Additionally, the commission did not recommend a discretionary referral to the Cape Cod Commission." Now we have a note. This is from Judith Giorgio, Board of Health. On 10/20, she writes, "I have reviewed the revised plans proposed for the new dwelling. The proposed plan does not give info regarding the plan for sewage disposal. A new septic system or connection to the municipal sewer will be required as part of the approval process. In addition, a floor plan of the existing dwelling is required to compare bedrooms proposed to the existing." Then we have a note. This is dated October 8th. It is from William and Patricia Hogan. And they, I'm not too sure about their address, but I'm sure there must be close by. I'm sorry. 42 Cedar Swamp Lane is their address. They were right. Please be advised that we approve the special permit, the perfected bylaw for the property located at 424 Stage Harbor Road. Then we have a note. Michael O'Brien and Williams Gaskin. This is dated October 18th. "We are the homeowners of 6 Cedar Swamp Lane, the Westerly Abutting Property. While we support the demolition or replacement of the existing home, we do not support the extension of the footprint to further encroach upon existing non-conforming setbacks. The existing southerly setback of the property is identified as 35.9 feet, but this measurement is actually from a second-story deck connected to the second-story overhang. The actual foundation for the first floor is over 40 feet from Cedar Swamp Lane, which is within the guidelines, and then a parentheses, the necessary measurements to determine the actual setback were not included in the plans. The proposed structure will be 30.3 feet from Cedar Swamp Lane. The foundation for this new home will be 10 feet closer to the road. This expansion also results in relocation of the driveway to be immediately adjacent to our property. Similarly, the shed is located in the calculation of the existing coverage, even though it is not a permanent structure and already crosses the property boundary. There is no permanent foundation for the shed. If you exclude the shed from the existing footprint, the plans will expand the home from 741 square feet within the maximum allowed building coverage, as noted, to 1,053 square feet, well beyond the maximum allowed building coverage. This is an expansion of 42% over the current structure. Additionally, the plans identify an existing second-story deck that is 11.8 feet from our shared property line where a 25-foot setback is required. This existing deck is actually a landing for the exterior stairs to the second story since the existing property does not have an interior staircase. This is currently a small encroachment into the setback. They are now proposing a significantly larger second-story deck, even closer to our property, that will now have a view directly into our home. Allowing the extension of their non-conforming structure will directly impact our enjoyment and value of our abutting property. The plans also do not consider the impact of stormwater runoff in the neighborhood. The proposed home will increase the impervious ground coverage on a non-conforming lot. We are concerned for our property was immediately downhill to the property under consideration and the protected wetlands immediately beyond our property. When the property was recently purchased, the state of the existing structure and the restrictions due to its non-conforming status were both well-documented. Since 424 Stage Harbor Road has been unoccupied and all utilities disconnected for almost three years, the property should be defined as abandoned and should not be reestablished under the definition of Section 5, Paragraph A of the protective bylaws of the Town of Chatham. The current state of the septic system is unknown. Similarly, that is covered by Section 5, Paragraph B. The proposed structure is out of scale for the property, has a negative impact on stormwater runoff, and has a negative impact on neighboring properties. We believe a design could be developed that would remain within the current non-conforming setbacks and be in appropriate scale while minimizing the impact on the neighborhood. We respectfully ask the board to reject Mr. Varian's request as proposed." Then there is a, part of this was a letter from the Town of Chatham on November 28th. It said, "Emergency condemnation in order to vacate." And I'm not too sure, and this was sent by Giorgio. I'm just saying that that was sent at that time. That was November 28th, 2017.
David, that was, David, that was included as part of Mr. O'Brien's correspondence.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Then we have a letter. It's dated October 6th. It is from Linda Simon. Yeah, I got it. I got it. I got it. "In this era when our world, our country, and our town are compromised by dwindling resources and available land, I cannot support the special permit requested by the applicant for 424. The lot is already non-conforming, a fact known to the purchaser of the property. The lots on Cedar Swamp Lane are very small, as noted, 5,250 square feet for this property, where 40,000 is required under current zoning. And the dwellings already are cheap to sell," going to quote. "The proposed 5% increase of building coverage from 827 to 1053 is untenable in an appeal where there is no extreme hardship. I feel confident that the owners and their builder can come up with a creative solution for the new dwelling without further compromising the existing non-conformities. I urge you to reject this request." That's the end of this correspondence. "I would now ask for anybody in the audience who wishes to speak either against this proposal or has a specific question, to so indicate to Sarah now."
David, I do have one additional piece of correspondence that was received.
Okay, sure.
"To whom it may concern, 424 Stage Harbor Road is our next-door neighbor to the north of our property. On October 20th, 2020, the Chatham Historical Commission ruled that the 424 Stage Harbor House is a deteriorating, unappealing house, which does not meet the Chatham's historical preservation requirements. Its architecture is out of place on Stage Harbor Road in general and Cedar Swamp Lane North section in particular, where three out of the four houses in this section were either recently renovated, rebuilt, or built on similar-sized lot. We are writing to fully support the plans for demolishing and rebuilding the existing house at 424 Stage Harbor Road as shown in the architecture plans. The house built to these plans will..." The house built to these plans will conform to the architectural style of many houses on Stage Harbor Road. We would like this opportunity to welcome our new neighbors whose new house will significantly enhance the curb appeal of our neighborhood. This letter is from Dr. Mohammed Malouf and Jane Malouf, and they own 432 Stage Harbor Road.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Again, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against or has a specific question about this proposal? So indicate now.
Ms. Simmons would like to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right. It is a nice design. I can agree with that. But the measurements were taken from open structural decks and steps. They included the shed that Mr. O'Brien has referred to as a freestanding building and not attached to the house. So even while this sounds like a minor increase, we are increasing the visual aspects and the actual area by extending the walls to include those revisions. I think that there is no need to to make a special permit for a lot as small as this when there is no evident hardship. And I believe that a lot of the problem would be for myself as a neighbor, and I didn't really identify myself. I live down the hill across the street from the proposed building. But I believe that the traffic problem is also an issue. And it's a very tiny road. And really, you know, it doesn't, it's hard for two vehicles to get by at the time. So any addition or any type of increase will be pretty monumental. I also have a question about whether the house would be torn down before the sewer system is built. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, you know, I'll just answer one of your questions quickly. And that is the business about hardship and all that. That has nothing to do with a special permit. That has to do with a variance. They are not requesting a variance here, so the factor of hardship does not play into it all. But the other question is Mr. Riley can answer to you. Sarah, is there anyone else out there who wish to speak either against this or has a specific question?
May I speak on my own behalf?
Mr. Hadad, the owner of the property, would like to speak.
Actually, Mr. O'Brien still wanted to speak as well. I thought Mr. Hadad speaks at the end.
Mr. O'Brien would like to speak.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, as I said in my letter, we don't oppose the house being demolished. We don't oppose something new being built there. We think it would be great to add something better. I just think there are a few things that can be misleading. And something else I didn't realize until reviewing everything yesterday is the measurements for the existing calculations are all done from exterior decks adjacent to the property. The proposed calculation, especially for the southern setback along Cedar Swamp Lane, if you look at that diagram, I don't know if that can be put up or not. It shows going to 30, from 35.9 feet, which is a deck, to 30.3 feet, but it's taking it all the way to the corner of the house, and it's not including that new proposed stone patio on the southern portion of the design. So in truth, the new setback from Cedar Swamp Lane is going to be what appears to be closer to maybe 15 to 18 feet because you need to include that proposed stone patio as part of the coverage, the building coverage, I believe. That also needs to be included in the calculation. So it's unclear if the proposed dwelling, being 1,053 square feet, also includes that proposed stone patio, which would further increase it. There is an issue in the neighborhood. I know Mr. Riley said, we don't believe there will be an impact to stormwater runoff, but there is an issue with stormwater runoff, especially because all of our properties run down to the protected wetlands down below. There is already an existing one. There will be an issue to stormwater runoff if we increase the coverage. So again, we're not opposed to the demolition. We're not opposed to something new. I have concerns when there's no stormwater plan and there's no septic plan. And the measurements are a bit misleading in that they don't include things like the proposed stone patio. And as Ms. Simmons pointed out, they take what was open air decking and include that in the square footage, and now it's an enclosed, much larger, more significant structure on a very small lot. And the loss of privacy by having a large deck now on the second floor looking down into our property.
Sarah, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I
I see no one else that would like to speak in
Well, I'm
that would like to speak in opposition to the application.
Yeah.
However, I do believe there will be some time for rebuttal.
Yes, there should be. Mr. Riley?
Yeah, Mr. Nixon, the, a couple of things. I know my client, Steve Hadad, wants to be heard also. So when I finish, perhaps we could listen to him. But as the board members know, patio is not included in building coverage because it's not a building. Decks are setbacks are measured from decks because they're a physical structure, and that's what establishes the setbacks, just like, you know, we have to measure the setback on the west side towards Mr. O'Brien's house from the existing deck. So the suggestion that somehow, you know, Ryder and Wilcox was playing fast and loose with the numbers. All they did was follow the requirements of the Town of Chatham in creating this, you know, these coverage numbers. The, I point out that if you visited the property, there's substantial vegetation between this structure and the O'Brien residence. And the fact I'm looking on Google Earth on my iPad, which is right next to me here, and it's very substantial vegetation. And with regard to stormwater runoff, would be happy to have the zoning board include a requirement that the applicant, you know, run roof gutters to dry wells and that the, an engineering plan be presented to the building inspector to show that all the, any runoff generated from the driveway or the patio will be contained on the lot. Other than that, I mean, you know, it's it's difficult to replace a structure like this with a decent sized structure without expanding to some degree. And so I think a 1,053 square foot footprint, yeah, see, there's the, you see the, thank you very much, Sarah. See the vegetation between the house and the O'Brien house, which is to the left of 424 Stage Harbor Road. I appreciate their concerns and the, and I know, I'm sure Mr. Hadad and his wife Maureen, Stephen Maureen, would be happy to work with the O'Briens and, you know, if the gaps in the vegetation or if they would like, you know, some taller vegetation to be planted. I'm sure that those desires could be accommodated without any difficulty. In terms of, you know, the traffic that was mentioned, I think the the fact that the driveway is moving away from Stage Harbor Road actually makes maneuvering a little bit easier. The, the road itself, Cedar Swamp Lane, as it approaches Stage Harbor Road is level. And so there's not, there's not a visibility issue there. So I think that the, as I said, this is part of my presentation. You know, the existing building is very unattractive. And the current design, which faces the front door towards Stage Harbor Road, is a huge improvement. And so again, we think it's, all in all, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That, which of course is the standard to be applied by your members. And if you want to give Mr. Hadad, Steve Hadad, a chance to speak, I'm sure he'll have something worthwhile to say as well.
Okay, this is not the right time for him, but can he
Well, it's in the nature, it's in the nature of rebuttal, Dave.
All right, okay. All right, Mr. Hadad?
Hi, hi, Steve Hadad. Thank you, first of all, for, you know, conducting this hearing. I appreciate it. I just, I want to express that, you know, the current structure, the side of the house faces Stage Harbor Road. And so you have basically two stories of wall, just sitting there on Stage Harbor. And I think the appearance of the new structure would be much softer on Stage Harbor Road. And that moving the driveway closer to the neighbors is really the only thing that makes sense. And I plan on putting the evergreens in between the driveway and their driveway. So I could say that their driveway is right adjacent to my lot. They would be side by side, but I would put evergreens in between them. And I'm all for an aesthetically pleasing property. And, you know, I have very high standards in aesthetics when it comes to homes. The other thing is that the deck barely extends any further than the other deck. And one concession I could make, because I wasn't sure I even wanted a stairway on the back, is that I would eliminate the stairway so that it doesn't look so close to the O'Brien property. And so if you take the stairway off, it appears totally different. And it's not much different from what's there now in terms of decking. It's just the deck extends from north to south just a little bit further. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Okay, we will now got a question from the board. We'll start with Dave Veach.
Thanks, Dave. Let's see. It's, I just want to, well, first of all, I went back out the other day and looked a little more closely at everything after I'd seen the letters in opposition. And Bill, I just want to ask you, it looks to me like there's a stake on the northwest corner of the building that indicates an AC unit there. And I don't see any mention about mechanical units on the, on the, on the plan or on the appeal. So I'm wondering about that because it would probably be within the setbacks.
Well, everything's within the setback.
What's that?
I said, everything is within the setback. If they, if the, if it wasn't shown on the plans that were provided to me, I couldn't make it part of the application, so.
Okay, well, so I was just trying to short circuit maybe the process, but that's all right. And then I guess the other, another question I would ask is because I too noticed there's quite a bit of vegetation between the two houses, the house to the west in this one. And it looked like probably a good number of those trees were on the neighboring lot. There is a maple tree, I think, there that shades quite a bit of the backyard. And I'm, and I'm not sure, I wasn't sure to notice whether, at least parts of that are on the Hadad property. And I'm wondering is there, if there's a commitment to maintain and keeping that tree or as much of it as possible or not.
Well, Steve Hadad can answer that question.
Okay.
I would maintain the maple tree. I'd like to thin it out and make it look a little bit cleaner. It's been neglected for many years, but I would keep the tree if I could just trim it a little bit.
Okay, that sounds good. I mean, you might want to with respect to the new deck being up there. The other thing that I, and I don't know about this, I don't think it's a requirement, but I know you offered Mr. Dad to eliminate that exterior stairway. I'm not sure in terms of the building code and means of egress, whether there's, whether it's necessary that it be there or not. So you might want to just look into that. I'm not qualified to say, but, you know, means of egress are an important consideration with things like that. And then secondly, I think I would say, I think there's, in by my looking at the site plan, I want to try to clear up what seems to me to be perhaps some confusion with Mr. O'Brien because the way I'm reading the site plan, the existing deck on the west side of the, of the structure is the point that's 11.8 feet from the property line, from his, from Mr. O'Brien's property line. The new deck, as it's proposed, at its closest point would be 13.3 feet from that property line. And the 11.7 feet is to the landing for the staircase that's proposed go up to that landing. So I guess that's not a question, but I, I, that's my understanding of reading the drawings, but I'm not sure everyone is clear about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, now those are the only questions I have. Dave, thank you.
Paul, do you have any questions?
I had the same question that Dave did about the exterior stairs. I understand why there were stairs there to begin with because I guess there was no interior staircase going up to the second floor. But I didn't really understand why there would be stairs coming from the deck down. It sounds as if that, that may be eliminated. I think it would then make the structure seem less imposing on the lot. So I would tend to favor that as well. The other question I had is I did notice the tree there, and that certainly provides a lot of shielding towards Mr. O'Brien's property. The additional plantings would also alleviate any concerns that there may be along those lines. Those are the only questions I had.
Happy, do you have any questions?
Who?
Happy.
So I don't have any questions, David.
Okay, Buck?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Riley. Bill, do you know if your clients showed the plans to the abutters before this was scheduled?
I don't, but I don't believe they did.
I can answer that. I didn't show him the actual plan. I, but I, you know, we met, we met, I met Mr. O'Brien, and we had a very nice conversation. And he's aware, of course, that, you know, we wanted to take it down. But I did not show him the actual plans.
So my follow-up question is, this is kind of in my backyard. And most of the developments or a lot of the renovations that we've been doing on Stage Harbor, the neighbors shared their plans and looked for comments to make it, we'll say, fly through some of the approval boards a little easier. And I, I hear the two abutters a little uncomfortable with the application as proposed. And I think what might, what might make sense is that maybe the applicant maybe talk with the abutters who were concerned and see if maybe they can come up with a consensus on what would be okay. It's a very tight neighborhood, very small lots. And I think for harmony going forward, it would probably be a good way of starting off on the right foot.
Question.
What's your buck?
I guess I started going over my, I should have just stayed with the question, did they talk? Sorry.
All right, Dana, questions?
No, I have no questions, but I don't think Attorney Riley meant to say that the property was abandoned.
No, absolutely not. It just wasn't lived in.
No, but you did say it. So I just think you want to take that out.
Okay. Now, it was not abandoned in a zoning sense.
All right, questions? Dave Thompson?
I don't have any questions for Mr. Riley, but I would go along with, do away with the stairs on Mr. O'Brien's side. There are, there are, it looks like two sliding doors that, or at least one sliding door that goes out there. That would give him a little more privacy, make it look not as big. And I thought, I won't go into the abandonment thing, but sure looked as if it hadn't been used in a long time. Thank you, Mr. Nixon.
Questions from Megan?
I don't have any questions. I, I don't think that were not addressed. I will say that I can completely understand. I actually have spent some time in and around that house when there were people in it. I mean, I am old, so I don't recall when, but it was not that long ago. Couple, three, four years. But I can see where changing the, the layout, the, the direction of the house, the word is escaping me, but could definitely impact the neighbors. But I think that once you've done that, this design is attractive and does fit the neighborhood. But I can see where it's the, sort of the relocation, the changing of the front back structure really does impact the neighbors.
Okay, any further questions from anyone? And Paul?
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veach seconds.
Okay, so again, the voters today are myself, Dave Veach, Paul, Happy, and Buck. With the exception of the Avalon Point, one would be myself, Dave Veach, Paul, Buck, and Dave Thompson. So we're voting to go into deliberations. Dave Veach?
Veach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. So deliberations, we'll start with Paul.
This is Paul Sample. I guess I would say that any, anything that eliminates what's there now is certainly going to be an improvement in the neighborhood. It seems to me that the best design would be to eliminate the staircase coming down from the new deck, since it doesn't seem as if it's necessary, and it would decrease the overall impact of the building on the lot. I think that combined with plantings should make it attractive. And the orientation of the building to the street will make it more attractive to the general neighborhood. So I would be inclined to favor the application.
Happy?
I agree with everything that Paul just said, because I do think the front, the front door does need to face Stage Harbor Road for the sake of the viewing of the neighbors, neighborhood, and also removing the deck, which takes away the impact. So I would vote in favor of it.
Buck?
Well, it, it certainly is a nice looking house, and almost anywhere in Chatham would be an addition. I agree with Paul that almost anything would be better. But I am, I am concerned about the two abutters who live very close to it in a very tight neighborhood. And I, I really wish that maybe there could be some uniformity in agreement. And I, I'm kind of wishing that the applicants would be willing to talk with Mr. O'Brien and Ms. Simonich and see if we can come up with a, a working solution. So I'm representing, or I'm feeling support for the abutters that are concerned.
Excuse me, I had to unmute. I think it's a nice project in a very tight neighborhood. I agree with what Paul and Happy had to say, and I would be fully in support of it. It's a tough project in a tough neighborhood, but it looks nice, and it's a vast improvement. So I would vote in favor of it if I were voting.
Dave Thompson?
Thank you. I also think it's a vast improvement of what's there now. I would go along with this as long as they did away with the stairway on the back. Thank you.
Megan?
I agree. I would do away with the stairway, but other than that, you know, I do recognize and empathize that it will affect the abutters. But I think anything you do on that small a lot that brings it to the current design and what's appropriate for the neighborhood is going to affect the abutters in some way, shape, or form. So if I were voting, I would say without that staircase, I would support the project.
Dave Veach?
Yes, everything that's been said has been well, well put. I definitely, it's definitely, there's no question that having the design of the house address the street, if you will, Stage Harbor Road is a great improvement and will be a great improvement in, in the streetscape on Stage Harbor Road. The impact on the neighbors I am concerned about is they expressed. But my sense of this is especially, and, and I can go along, I think eliminating the stairs would help with that. And also, and so you end up actually somewhat, the deck ends up somewhat further away than the neighbors than it is presently. And I think once it's all said and done, moving in the driveway, the, the opportunity to put dry wells in and control the runoff and everything, all of which will be part of the, the, the building permit application process, all is going to be improvements. I think when it's all said and done, that these, the, and I don't think the increase in the footprint of the house is that is truly significant as the neighbors see it. I think when it's all said and done, there's going to be plenty here for everybody to be happy with, I would hope. So I will support it. It's either not considered to be substantially more detrimental than neighborhood. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dan. So my spin is just what Dave said. This, this is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. When you consider the design of the house to really make it fit in with Stage Harbor Road is great. It sounds like Mr. Haydad is going into a lot of trouble to make sure that, that a tree is saved, which is a real plus. Eliminating the stairway, I think, would be a condition that I would want to see included. And also, the fact that he's willing to put vegetation between their lots and all the rest of it. Sounds to me like all in all, this is really going to improve the neighborhood. And that while there's some difference of opinion now as to what might happen, I think at the end of the day, everybody should look at it as a plus. So with that, what conditions, Paul, do you think we should have on besides eliminating the stairway?
I think in addition to that condition, perhaps some additional plantings between the, the new driveway and the abutters, the O'Brien property. And then I guess the question becomes, when does it make sense for this to be demolished and rebuilt? As, as everybody has said, that's a very, very tight area. And I don't even know that everything could be contained on site. So I guess we need some discussion about that.
Okay, Mr. Haydad, you still there?
Yes, I'm here and.
Okay, good. Would you tell us when you would plan to start construction and when will it be all done?
Well, if I could, if I could interrupt for a minute. The, the, the property is not suitable for a septic system. And so the, they're really waiting for the sewer. The sewer right now ends at Honeysuckle Lane, about, you know, about 30 feet from our property line. And so the, my advice to, to Stephen Maureen Hadad is that, you know, they not do the demolition until, until the sewer pipe has gone past the property and they're in a position to hook up to it. That's my advice. We haven't discussed it before.
Okay, so going back, yes, Mr. Haydad?
I, I would follow Mr. Riley's advice, and, you know, I'd just be willing to maintain the property and have the lawn mowed. It had been let go for years and try to make it look decent. And there are a lot of nice evergreens on that property that I can have moved toward the neighbors, and I'm willing to do that.
Well, Mr. Haydad, if we impose our usual restrictions on a project like this, the first one would be very difficult, which is all construction activity and vehicles are going to be contained on the site. Well, I don't know how you're going to do that. So what would be the solution to that, Mr. Riley?
I think the, that's really, you know, an issue for Steve Smith, who's going to be the contractor. I think, you know, it's obviously, you know, the work most likely would be done in the wintertime. The parking lot down at the Harbor Masters office is generally empty at that time of year, so they could use that for satellite parking. I wouldn't expect the board to make any other provision, in other words, that, so that they, they have to contain their vehicles on the site itself. So, you know, we have, we do have the town parking lot down the street, and I think, I'm assuming Steve would be, Steve Smith would be able to do that. The Hadads are candidly are quite familiar with, with building on a tight lot there. The home in Chatham is, is a very tight lot as well. And Steve Smith did the work there without any difficulties.
Well, okay, but of course, we're going to have, hold Mr. Haydad responsible, but that's okay. Mr. Haydad, the other things that you would be familiar with, I think, standard conditions would be between June 30th and Labor Day. Who knows what year this might be? But there would be no exterior construction and no work permitted on the weekends, construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Do you understand those conditions?
Yes, I understand. Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Buck.
Yeah. I didn't hear anybody, maybe I was daydreaming, but something about the engineering plan showing dry wells and drainage would have to be included before the building permit could be issued? Is that a?
Yeah, we'd have no objection to it if you want to have it.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, Dave Veach, I was just going to say, I think that, I'm not sure how, how much of that is a requirement for the building permit, but I, I don't think it hurts for us to put that condition on as Bill has suggested, because it is an area where it's very sensitive, so we want to make sure that they, that's dealt with.
Okay. So in addition to our usual conditions, what I'm hearing is there's three more that should be in. Number one would be the one we just talked about, about the dry wells and all that. Number two was the vegetation. I'm not too sure how that should be worded. And number three, what was the number? Paul, what was the third one?
Moving the deck.
The third one was elimination of the.
Oh, elimination of the deck.
I mean, the staircase.
The stairs, not the deck.
The staircase to the deck.
Okay. All right, eliminate the stairs to the deck?
Just for clarification, Mr. Nixon, are you looking, which type of plantings are you looking for? Just a vegetative buffer, evergreen plantings between the properties? What would the board be looking for as far as that conditions?
I think vegetated buffer and a lot, hopefully Mr. Haydad and Mr. O'Brien can discuss that and come to an agreement as to what it might be.
And as far as the dry wells and drainage, the way I have the condition written right now is they'll be added to the site, dry wells and drainage will be added to the site plan to be approved by the building commissioner prior to the issuance of the building permit?
Sounds correct to me.
Well, no, I don't, I don't really, the, I think, rather, rather than imposing an obligation on Jay Briggs, our building commissioner, to somehow assess the engineering plan, simply that the stamp engineering plan dealing with the drainage submitted at the time of the building, the building permit application.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone object to that? Okay. So I think we're at a point, Paul, where you can move to have a vote with these, with actually be five conditions now.
Yeah, this is, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the application with those conditions.
David Veach seconds.
Okay, is anyone confused as to what the conditions are? All right, so then we will vote. Let me get out my list. Dave Veach?
Veach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous decision. Thank you, Mr. Riley, Mr. Haydad, and everyone else who participated in the discussion.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Sarah, 20-061.
Application number 20-061-512W LLC, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, PO Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02645. Owner of property located at 512 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 15D Block 35, Lot 80. The applicant seeks to instruct conforming facility, a conforming facility management structure on a non-conforming lot. The existing structures are non-conforming, and that they exceed the allowable building coverage for a hotel slash in-use. The proposed structure will comply with setback requirements. The existing lot coverage is 28.7%, and the proposed lot coverage is 29.9%, where 25% is the maximum allowed for a hotel slash in-use. The lot contains a total of 76,412 square feet in the GB1/R20 zoning districts. A special permit is required per Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D to B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, David Veach, I'm on the abutters list for this project, and so therefore will be recusing on this.
Okay, so Dennis, that would mean you would be a voter taking Dave's place on this one. So do we have Mr. Ford?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Good to see you, too.
Thank you. Good to be seen. Attorney Mike Ford, representing 512W LLC. And together with me is Mr. Oppenheim, who's the manager of, of the LLC, which is the owner of the Wayside Inn properties. We're here because the applicant is looking to build a small accessory structure, and I'm going to let Mr. Oppenheim describe what it is and, and why the inn is bringing forward the project. And then, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to quickly review the criteria after that.
Very good. Mr. Oppenheim?
Hello, it's Dave Oppenheim. Can you hear me? Yes. Hello? Yes. Oh, you can. Good. The, this proposed facilities building is being built for several reasons. When we built the rear building back in the 90s, it was when you, we were only allowed to build a six foot, six and a half foot high basement, because in those days you built the, your height was from the bottom of the footing. Over the years, we, our business has changed, and COVID has really changed for the lot. We now have needs, needs to keep our, more equipment and stored inside. We've been taking in and out of the basement for years. When people arrive with bicycles and things, we either put it, we usually put them in the basement. We've been toying with this idea for a long time, and what's happened this year is, for example, in July 4th weekend, we had people staying, and we had 22 bicycles. We had people putting their, they don't buy Schwinn bikes for $100 anymore. All these fancy bicycles, people were bringing them into their rooms. We were trying to accommodate them in, in, you know, in the basements of the thing. We were trying to accommodate them in, you know, in the basements of the thing and we just couldn't do it. We have snow blowers, we have garden equipment, we have outside furniture and things that are constantly being moved around. And now certainly we have outside heaters and things that we're constantly using. In addition, people with these types, types of equipment, people are coming with kayaks, they're coming with windsurfers, there are enormous amounts of bicycles, these very, very expensive bicycles, and we'd like to be able to provide safe storage for them because they prefer not to leave them outside. It's just more people coming down that are physically active. So it's basically a two-car garage. As you're looking at the front of it, the left side would be used for our own storage, the right-hand side would be used for client storage. The upper room would be so that we would have additional, some meeting space for our, our own staff and potentially we want to have the option of maybe having, we're getting more and more requests for people that are staying at the hotels, there are more workspace. We have a couple of places, small offices in the basement that we do allow people to use occasionally, but we don't have much space. And these would, this would only be for hotel guests and everything would be managed. No one would have access to the storage facility unless accompanied by a staff member. And again, the upstairs space would be, would be used primarily for our own use, but if necessary, for additional space for guests of the hotel to potentially use a computer or have some privacy if they needed to have some sort of a workspace. It's basically a two-car, an extended two-car garage with, with space above it. We've met with the neighbors, the Fletchers next door, who have been our neighbors for almost as long as we've owned the wayside and we met with them and I believe you have a letter for them. We've been through the planning board, they had a few suggestions with which we agreed. So we have no problems with any of the conditions they set forth and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ford, I think you only have to address the first three criteria. You know, you were, you were kind enough to provide us with all of the criteria and there's no sense going through four through 10, frankly. So if you would just address the first three criteria, please.
Certainly. So I think the easiest way to address the first three is why are we here? The lot is over 76,000 square feet, but it's a split lot. It's, a portion of it is GB1 and a portion is R20. But back in 94, the Board of Appeals issued a special permit allowing the residential portion of the lot to be used for purposes in the GB1 zone, which includes the Inn. So the zoning was really GB1 for the site. GB1 has no building coverage requirement. GB1 has a 10% lot coverage requirement. However, an Inn or a hotel even located in a GB1 zone has its own building coverage requirement of 25%. And so even though the lot coverage on the lot is only 26%, it is non-conforming because of the special requirements for hotels' inns in the Town of Chatham, even when they're located in a GB1 zone. So because of that technicality, we had a long conversation with staff and the building commission, it was decided out on abundance of caution, we ought to apply for a special permit for the increase of the building coverage, even when there's no building coverage requirement in the GB1 zone because it's a hotel use. So with that in mind, the existing building coverage, as I indicated, is 28.7%. The 876 square foot facility building will increase it by 1.2% to 29.9%. That is the only non-conformity that you're dealing with, Mr. Chairman. That is the one you need to make a finding on, that this would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Other than that, the building is a little over, it's 20 and a half feet high, 20.6. We filed the, the height requirements with the application. Because it's commercial, we went to the planning board, the planning board reviewed it and the planning board made a finding that it was approvable and did in fact approve it. They also, Mr. Chairman, issued a statement of conditions, which I've suggested in my findings should be a condition of the approval that your board issues. I've proposed that. So the first three criteria are adequacy of the size of the site. I'd suggest the site is more than adequate, of being a little under two acres, particularly with the building coverage requirements. I think it fits nicely on the site, as did the planning board. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure. It's a modest accessory structure. Mr. Oppenheim worked hard with the only residential of Butter. The other Butters are either commercial or the Town of Chatham backing up to the golf course. And he had them review the plans at every stage and you have a letter that they're happy with what the end result is in this proposal. So I'd suggest it's compatible with the rest of the Inn and with the neighborhood. And the extent of the proposed increase in non-conforming nature, everything, including because of the previous special permit in terms of use, is conforming. The setbacks are conforming, the height is conforming. The only issue is that technicality about an Inn having its own building coverage. And so we've sought a 1.2% increase in that and that's the only new non-conformity potentially created. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, I think the other criteria are obvious on their face and if they weren't, the planning board has looked at all of those issues, including the utilities, and made their approval. Happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this special permit? If so, please indicate on the screen so Sarah can see.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, then I will read the correspondence. First of all, we have from the Town of Chatham, Department of Health, we have Judith Giorgio, who writes on 10/20, "I have reviewed the plan to add an outbuilding. This property is connected to municipal sewer. The plan as proposed will not add any additional sewer flow. I have no concern." Then we have a note from Catherine Halpern. She's the planning board chairman. She writes on October 13th, "The planning board at their September 28th meeting reviewed the ZVA's request for comment on 512 Main Street. After review of this request, the planning board voted 700 to send a positive recommendation." I don't see, Mr. Ford, that the recommendations they had or conditions writing are here. That's okay, we can talk about that.
I sent the, I sent the statement of conditions to Sarah this morning. I'm happy to just, if you want me to, read them quickly for the record, if you need them.
Oh, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
So the site plan approval was subject to the following. One, identify and delineate all proposed types of utilities. Show a not less than three-foot wide pedestrian accessway to the south side, southwest side of the proposed building and delineate the location of the dry wells for the proposed building. They, they made it subject to the site plan that you have before you and any deviation required further planning board approval. And they made it subject to a certification by a licensed professional that all site work is completed in compliance with the approved plans and the certificate of use and occupancy issued by the building commissioner. And then finally, all exterior lighting shall be downward casting and shall be designed so as not to illuminate areas off of the property. And those were the four conditions, Mr. Chairman.
And I think you stated that you would like those conditions included any decision we made.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Then we also have a letter. This is from Frank and Carol Fettler. They are at 38 Blackberry Lane. They write on October 21st, "My wife, Carol, and I have met with David Oppenheim regarding his plans to build a facility slash garage on the Wayside property adjoining ours. Mr. Oppenheim explained the need for the building, gave us some preliminary plans and asked us to highlight any design and layout concerns we might have. We have since been given the final plans and plot plan and are satisfied with the structure and the layout. It is our understanding that this facility will be used for storage and for office space on the upper floor and not for additional room rental. The design, architectural elements and scale will fit well with the area, so we have no objections to the proposed plan as submitted." Is there anyone in the audience who has a specific question or would like to speak against this? If so, please indicate now so that Sarah can see you.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition.
Okay, very good. Then we'll have questions from the board. Happy, do you have any questions?
Sorry, had to unmute. No, I have no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan, no questions.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson has no questions, sir.
Megan?
Megan Story has no questions.
Paul?
Paul Semple has no questions.
And I have no questions. Paul, you can make a motion, please.
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Okay, and I will second that. We're ready to vote, so, Paul, your vote?
Semple votes yes.
Yes? Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Dennis, you're voting on this?
Sullivan votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Deliberations, we can start with Buck.
Excellent presentation, clear and simple. I support it.
Dennis?
Likewise, I, if I am voting, pretty straightforward. I certainly would be in favor of it and will vote for it.
Dave Thompson?
Likewise, no problems, beautiful design. I would vote for it if I was voting.
Megan?
Same, it's beautiful. They obviously need it. There are tons of people bringing bikes and so forth on vacation. This will help because they won't be outside, so I would fully support it.
Happy?
I agree with all the above.
And I agree too. There's nothing about this that isn't good. Okay. So we need a motion. I don't know if we need any conditions on this. It seems to me it would be pretty straightforward, so just the way it is. Paul?
This is Paul Semple. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the planning board conditions that had been outlined earlier. And then in terms of construction, I don't know that, we certainly have plenty of room back there, but on the other hand, it's being used for the Inn, so I'm open to any suggestions that people have about restrictions if needed in terms of construction.
You know, Paul, I wouldn't think we need to put any restrictions on it because frankly, they're not gonna do construction when they have a lot of guests because it would take up too many of those spots, so I, I don't think we need to do that.
I'm, I'm assuming that this is gonna be winter construction in any case.
I think that's true. Mr. Oppenheim, you there?
I am. We, we are hoping to build this this winter if we can, if we can get a contractor to build it, but our, our plan was to build it after Thanksgiving and be completed probably sometime by in mid-March.
Great, okay.
We certainly would not be building it during the summer.
Right.
Based, based on those representations, I would move to approve and adjust the conditions with respect to the planning board.
Okay, and I'll second that. So we're ready to vote. Paul, your vote?
Semple votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Dennis?
Sullivan votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Oppenheim and Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Thank you.
Okay, so our next one, we go to 20-0...
That's what happened the last time. This is, this one is earlier than that.
Application number 20-060, David and Tamara DePiscuali, care of Rick Roy, 123A, Queen Inn Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Owner of property located at 115 Perch Pond Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 11F, Block 11, Lot G14. The applicant, the applicant seeks a waiver as allowed under Section 7B 12D for the additional land area requirement for a one-bedroom guest unit, which is part of the principal dwelling and is occupied by a member of the immediate family. The existing dwelling and proposed addition comply with the required setbacks and building coverage. The existing building coverage is 2,156 square feet and the proposed building coverage is 2,596 square feet, where 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 21,037 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required per Master General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Roy, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
And we certainly can. Floor is yours.
Okey-dokey.
I can see you.
I'm representing David DePiscuali and Tammy DePiscuali, who I've known pretty much most of my fire department career. Dave and Tammy's mother, well, Dave's mother-in-law and Tammy's mother are selling their house and they are going to be moving into this structure if it gets approved. We are removing the existing deck and actually putting an addition that will house a family room area and kitchen and then incorporating the sleeping quarters in the finished-off basement of the existing structure. As was said by Sarah, we're actually just seeking the relief from the bylaw that allows there to be two dwellings on the same, two kitchens on the same property. Otherwise, we're not over on site coverage or setbacks. You know, I don't feel, you know, I'll go through the criteria. I think this is pretty straightforward.
You know, I don't, you know, I don't think you need to go through the criteria.
Okay, I'll do whatever you want. I'll entertain any questions if anybody has any.
I think that's the way to go. Okay. Very good. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak in favor of this? If so, please indicate to Sarah now.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, then I will read the correspondence. The first is from Judith Giorgio, Board of Health, on 10/20. She writes, "I reviewed the plans to convert existing living space in the basement to an ABU, including a bedroom. This project was reviewed by the Board of Health on October 5th. The board approved the additional bedroom as proposed. I have no concern." Then we have a note. This is from Leo Contanen, 133 Perch Pond Road. Leo writes, "On October 19th, I have had the pleasure and privilege of being a close neighbor to the DePiscuali over 30 years. I welcome their proposal and request that you approve it." Then we have a note from Robert and Chantel in Kilkenny. On October 19th, they write, "My wife, Chantel, and I are the owners of 112 Perch Pond Road and Director Butters. We have received a hearing notes before your board and with respect to the above property, this letter is to confirm that we have reviewed the plans on file and give our full support to this project." Then we have an email. This is from Mike Hanafy on October 16th, writes, "My wife, Elizabeth, and myself fully support the application for the additional land area requirement for a one-bedroom guest unit. They are exceptionally good neighbors and they live at 127 Perch Pond Road." And another email is from Caroline McCutcheon. She lives at 63 Wilfrid Road. She writes, "On October 16th, I write in support of the project. They, they are polite and considerate neighbors. We have no objections to an in-law apartment." And then lastly, from Robert and Cynthia Hearn, 88 Perch Pond Road, they write, "On October 17th, we are neighbors and are such a happy to support their plan. We see no downside to this arrangement in terms of increased traffic noise or other disturbance. Please feel free to contact us." And that's it. That is the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone out there that has a specific question or would like to speak against this proposal? If so, please indicate now to Sarah.
I see no one that has a specific question or wishes to speak in opposition.
Okay, very good. Then we'll have questions from the board. Let's start with Dave Beach. Dave, do you have any questions?
Dave Beach has no questions.
Paul?
Paul Semple has no questions.
Happy?
No questions from Happy.
Buck?
No questions from Buck.
Dennis?
No questions from Sullivan.
Dave Thompson?
No questions from Dave Thompson.
Megan?
I have no questions.
Nor do I. So Paul, I entertain a motion to go into, close the hearing and into deliberations.
This is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Beach, seconds.
Okay. Dave Beach, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Paul?
Semple votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous. Okay. Deliberations. Dave Thompson?
Thank you, sir. I'm definitely in favor of this. It's a nice design. It's nice to see parents being properly taken care of. Thank you, sir.
Megan?
I think it's a fantastic project. I agree. It's a perfect use for an ADU, so it's great.
Davey?
Yes, it certainly meets all the criteria. I don't think technically it is an ADU, but it's fine. It achieves the same purpose, and I will enthusiastically support it.
Happy?
I wonder if I could borrow the plan to show to our kids, because I definitely enthusiastically support it.
I think you'd have to include a check with the submission of the plan to your kids. Buck?
I support it.
Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan, yes, I support it. I go along with Dave Beach's comments. It's really not an ADU. Comes under the guest room statute.
That's right, and I'm fully in favor. Okay. So, Paul, I don't see that we need to condition this at all. And if anybody, please speak up.
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Beach seconds.
Okay, so we will now vote. Dave Beach votes?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Roy.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Sarah, we have 20-031.
Application number 20-031, Avalon Point Residence Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 24 Avalon Point Road, also shown in the Town of Chatham Assessor's Map, 12L, Block 15C, Lot L4. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot, via demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling and swimming pool. Also proposed is the replacement of exterior mechanical system appliances, AC condensers, within the Abutter setback. The existing dwelling is non-conforming. It is located 39.9 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The existing AC condenser is non-conforming, and it is located 21.7 feet from the Southernly Abutter. The proposed swimming pool will be non-conforming, and it will be located 47.4 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District, where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed AC condensers will be non-conforming, and they'll be located 24 and a half feet from the Southernly Abutter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 4,120 square feet, 12.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 5,133 square feet, 15.1%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 125 feet of frontage, where 150 feet is required. The lot contains 40,914 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 9, and Sections 5B and 8D2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from July 9th and September 10th, 2020.
Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Bill Riley, on behalf of Scott Brown and the trust that owns the property. Mr. Brown is participating today as well. Karen Kempton is the architect. Karen, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, would you, well, pre-atory to that, the, Mr. Chairman, since our last meeting, this is round three. Karen has made some significant changes to the structure, but the goal of making it less massive, which was a concern of some of the members in our last meeting. And I'd like to have her run through the changes that she's made before we get further into the hearing. So, Karen?
Okay. Sarah, can you pull up the front elevation comparison that I sent over? Thank you. So, we've worked hard since the last hearing in September to reduce the massing and scale of the project. The top elevation was the previously proposed front elevation, and the bottom one that you see is what we are proposing today. And as you can see, we have removed the second 36-foot wide gambrel, and have kept the smaller 24-foot wide gambrel centered on the house. We have also reduced the height of the structure by two feet, so we have gone from 28 feet 6 inches to 26 feet 6 inches. We believe that both these changes significantly reduce the visual massing of the structure from the street. Also, by changing the roof pitches of the gambrel to accomplish this lower roof line, it has the ripple effect of effectively changing the scale and massing of the other gambrels as well, as you can see from the narrower version of the garage gambrel below. We have also removed the left dormer of the garage, which faces our Abutter to the left, so there will be no dormer over the garage. You can see that on the left elevation of the set that you were given. We think this simplifies the roof system. The next slide is of the footprint comparison, if we can go to that. Thank you. You can see that we have, the new proposal is along the far right. Our last proposal would be the center proposal. So, you can see from this that we have reduced the width of the house by two and a half feet. We have gone from 77 feet 6 inches to 75 feet. This amounts to a decrease of 426 square feet of living space from the previous proposal. At 13.2% coverage, we are 1.1% higher than the existing, or 375 square feet larger, of which 135 square feet is actually covered porch with no living space. So, we believe with these changes in height, width, and front elevation revisions, we have reduced the massing and scale of the home as requested. And we hope that you agree that this house, 65 feet back from the road to the garage, and 120 feet back from the road to the front door, is not detrimental to the neighborhood, but an attractive addition to a neighborhood that will probably change over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Would that be your presentation, Mr. Riley?
Well, I think the, Mr. Chairman, because this is a well-trod road here we're working on, perhaps it would make more sense to go to the board members for questions to see how we're doing.
Okay, I'll go through asking for folks out there first before I get to our questions, okay? There is only one piece, well, I should start by saying, if there is anyone out there that would like to speak in favor of this proposal, if so, please indicate to Sarah now.
Yeah, Mike Picard, who's our landscape architect, has raised his hand, so if you'd recognize him, that'd be great.
Okay, Mike?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Mike Picard, registered landscape architect with Sudbury Design Group, speaking on behalf of the Browns. Our team has worked tirelessly to these revisions, and the house has been sited in a manner which fulfills conservation and zoning requirements, to provide a home for the Browns, a home in their landscape for the Browns to enjoy with their family for generations. I'll speak briefly to also sort of the curb appeal or the front elevation. There will be plantings that will be added to the front, which will be in keeping with traditional Cape Cod landscapes in terms of their type and size. They will also be in context with and enhance the Avalon Point neighborhood. Thank you for, the board, for allowing me to speak, and I could answer any questions if needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else out there would like to speak in favor? If so, please indicate to Sarah.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, we only have one new piece of correspondence. It's dated October 21st. It's from the Town of Chatham, and it's from our conservation agent, Callie Harper. She writes, "The proposed raising of existing dwelling, replacing with new single-family dwelling, new Title V septic and associated site improvements, an order of conditions was approved by the Conservation Commission with special and general conditions on October 7th." That's the extent of the correspondence. I will now ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak now either against this proposal or has a specific question. If so, please indicate to Sarah now.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, very good. Then we'll have questions from the board. Let's start with Megan. Megan, do you have any questions on this new proposal?
I do not have any questions on the new proposal at this time. I was not privy to the conversations because unfortunately, I missed the meeting in September, and I was not yet on the board in the earlier meeting. So, yeah.
All right, okay. Dave Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions of Mr. Riley.
Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan, no, I have no questions on this new plan.
Okay. Buck, do you have any questions of Mr. Riley, or the architect, or landscape guy, or anybody?
Buck has no questions.
Happy?
Correct. So, I have no questions.
I don't think I heard that Happy had any questions. Okay, Paul, your vote?
Paul Sample has no questions.
Dave Beach?
Dave Beach has no questions.
Okay. Then, Paul, I would entertain a motion?
Yes, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, let's take a vote. David Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Dave, I'm not involved in this one because it's-
Oh, you're right. That's right. I'm sorry. That's right. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Dave Thompson, he's the voter.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, deliberations. Paul, let's start with you. You had some major concerns last time. What do you think now?
Yep, this is Paul Sample. Well, the silence speaks volumes. Clearly, the design has been changed, and it really is remarkable how a change in the roof line, a change in the gambrels and so forth that Karen has worked out, makes a dramatic effect. And it seems to me that the questions and issues that we have raised in the past and that the neighbors have raised have been addressed commendably by the team on behalf of the Browns. So, from my viewpoint, I no longer have objections based on this design and plan to vote in favor.
Dave Beach?
Yes, that was very well said, and I agree with all of it. It looks, I'm hap- it seems that we've come to a happy meeting of the minds, and I want to commend everybody for their efforts.
Buck?
I can support it. It's a big improvement, and I'm glad to see that it looks like we can get this through.
Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan, yep, it's a nice project. Compliments everyone who was involved in it.
Dave Thompson?
I'm in favor of this. It's a nice design. Karen does beautiful, beautiful work. I am a voter, and I will definitely vote in favor.
Megan?
You know, having not been party to the other conversations, I just have to say that I sincerely appreciate the compromise and the changes that you guys have made to make this fit the neighborhood more. It still looks huge to me as a South Chatham resident, but it's beautiful, so good luck.
Yes, and I'm certainly, I've been in favor for this beginning, so substantially, Dr. Middleton, neighbor, no way, no way. So, now we come to, before we vote, does anybody have any thoughts about conditioning, Dave Beach, from your construction days and all that? Do you think we need to condition it?
Well, I think we probably should keep our standard containing of vehicles to the site or absent, or with permission to the neighbors, just because it's a good-sized lot, and, you know, we don't, it's less likely to aggravate the neighborhood if we keep that condition. But I don't believe we need to do this. Well, I think it might be wise to impose the summer restrictions as well.
Okay.
To everyone happy.
Yep. All right. Paul, what do you think of that?
This is Paul Sample. I can agree with David's comments.
Happy?
Once again, I'm-
I know, but we're just talking about conditioning something in a, in a- this decision took three times to get to, so we want to make our decision as palatable.
Yeah, I think there should be the normal condition.
Okay, Buck?
I support the conditions that have been proposed.
Okay, Dennis?
I'm muted. Well, I would go along with the standard conditions. I don't think it's anything extraordinary.
Okay, Dave Thompson?
I will go with the other members and go along with what they've come up with.
Okay, Megan?
I have to say that in this particular case, I'll go along with it. I mean, that's fine. But I don't see the need for even the summer conditions. I think that they should be allowed to build because it's, I mean, it's pretty isolated, so, and they're going to be able to keep everything on that property. But I'll go along with whatever, but I just, I don't know that we need that summer restriction.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Browns, I mean, the lots here are very large, and the, this is a project that's going to take quite a while to build. Because of the time that we've spent working out these issues, the, you know, it would be difficult to impose the standard summer conditions. We would really delay the construction of the property by another year. So, I'd ask the board to reconsider that condition.
Okay, I'm Mr. Brown. Yeah.
This is Rick Roy. I just wanted to, this is Rick Roy speaking.
Hi, Rick.
He's the builder of this project, so we will certainly be cognizant of the neighbors in this neighborhood. We very seldom have any trouble during our construction projects.
Oh, that's very true, Mr. Roy. Okay, thank you. Yeah, my spin on this is because the folks up there were, let's just say, so against all this, we would want to do everything possible to bring peace and quiet in the summer, which is when those homes are used. So, I would favor having the conditions as laid out by Sarah on the cover sheet. I hear what they say about between June 30th and Labor Day. It doesn't say there can't be any construction. It's just no exterior construction. So, there's plenty of inside stuff they can do and all the rest of it. So there's plenty of inside stuff they can do and all the rest of it. I would suggest for the peace and quiet of everybody that we not tinker with our conditions and approve it with them the way they're laid out on the cover sheet. Does anybody disagree with that?
Mr. Nixon, Dave Thompson here.
Yes.
If this had not come before the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Roy could work 12 months of the year. Isn't that right, Mr. Roy?
That's correct.
I don't feel it's necessary to penalize Mr. Roy and his workers. We're in a position in this world right now where they're lucky to have a job. Let's not put their job in jeopardy. That's my truth, true feeling. I would like to have this revoted. I'm, I'm not going to vote for the, um, the, uh, the closure for June 30th through September, uh, Labor Day. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your opinion. Does anybody else have an opinion?
Mr. Nixon, there is one a butter that has their hand raised and would like to speak.
All right, this is very unusual. Who is it?
Mr. Campanelli.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Campanelli.
Thanks for your letting me speak. I, I'm, I was heartened by the fact that you may restrict construction during the summer. The simple reason is that the pathway for all of the neighborhood is down along the Brown house between the Browns and the Riddells. So I would say for at least two or three months, it isn't a difficulty. And I, I really do have to disagree with Mr. Thompson. Not only is he not right, he is not even wrong. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Paul, I think we need a motion.
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the application as submitted with our standard conditions.
Okay.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, we will vote on that. So let's just start with voting by Dave Beach.
Beach votes yes.
Paul.
Sample votes yes.
Buck.
Buck votes yes.
Dave Thompson.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
And I vote yes also, so that's a unanimous vote. Uh, thank you all very much and I can't wait to see the finished product. Okay. It's been suggested to me before we go on to our last application, which could take some time, that I offer everybody a five-minute recess. So guys on the control booth, five-minute recess, so just give me a 15-second countdown when we're going to come back. Okay, welcome back everyone to today's Town of Chatham zoning board of appeals meeting. We are now going on to application 20-059. Sarah.
Application number 20-059, Michael and Lori McKenna, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 144 Chat Harbor Lane, also shown in the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 5B Block 1 Lot 10. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling and swimming pool. Also proposed is the construction of a new driveway, footpath and kayak rack as allowed by special permit under sections 4A, 3A and 4A, 3D of the bylaw. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and it is located within the coastal conservancy district floodplain elevation 14. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located nine feet from the coastal conservancy district and a proposed swimming pool will be non-conforming in that it will be located five feet from the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 14,400 square feet of contiguous build, buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required. The lot contains 207,600 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required in remast general law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9 and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Chatham protected by law.
Mr. Litchfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Mike and Lori McKenna, who are with us. Also with us today are Patrick Hearn and his associate Peter Fletcher, Patrick Hearn, architect, Nick and Jim, Land Management, and of course, that Eldridge of the Southeast who is known to you. I appreciate that this has been a lengthy afternoon already and I will try not to rule me for saying, I should let you know there's some history even before this project has come before you. Mike and Lori, who own a house, Al's for, on the Cape, uh, want very much to be in Chatham and they've been looking around at possibilities. And over a year ago, they became, they negotiated with a co-owned owner and made an offer on the house, which was contingent on appropriate permitting. And we started to file this in March. Well, we all know what happened in March. So there has been a significant amount of time expended already by Mike and Lori, but actually that worked out well because it allowed us to work extensively with conservation to address all of the concerns that they have. I suspect that when you went out there and walked through the watered upland, you noted that the stakes were weathered. That's because they've been there since the spring. There's been a long project to get to this point. And in fact, the house itself has, the existing house, which we proposed to mollity, it was the subject of considerable contention back then. Seawall was constructed by prior owners that has caused frankly harm. Our business environmentally found to leave it where it is. There is correspondence I discovered in the file that goes back to the early 1980s from 25, a letter about the seawall, but that's ancient history, not, not relevant here. What we are proposing, as is shown on the plans, is to abandon the uninteresting and unexpired, uninspired house that sits up on the bluff. And to do what has been encouraged in a lot of places along the coast to retreat, to retreat sensibly to an amount of upland in the neighborhood. And if Sarah would be kind enough, perhaps she could allow Thad to put up a neighborhood map, which gives you an idea of where the buildable upland is. Total 21,000 square feet. But this particular aspect of the fourth part of your law has 14,400 square feet of buildable upland, which is more than exists essentially anywhere else in the neighborhood. Nonetheless, we've been able during the time that we have worked with the Conservation Commission to make changes to the plans, to eliminate the view corridor until the house is built, to spruce up the mitigation, to deal. Thank you, Thad. If you could show us sort of the overall look, I think that might give a better sense for the board. Thank you. The existing house is down at the bottom of the screen. The proposed house is about a third of the way up toward the left. If you look at the area, everything inside of those dotted lines at that, preferable because it really shows, I think, a little bit more clearly what's upland than what is not. The only upland, if you could do that, Thad, I would appreciate that. That's not quite it. But I'll, I'll go on with what I was saying. We have done our best to eliminate the, the blatantly non-conforming house out on the bluff. We're working, we're going to continue to work with, for a beach nourishment plan. When you drove down there along Chat Harbor and you, that, any possibility you could get that up for us, please, it would be appreciated. The one that I sent you, I think it shows a little bit more clearly. It, I don't want to waste, we'll, we'll come back to that at some point. Well, that's all right. For it, it's, that's not an important issue right now. What we are, a relatively modest footprint, 2,000, thank you. That shot there gives you an idea of how much buildable upland is in the neighborhood. We propose to build the house in that white shape, which is some upland. If you look at the houses to the north along Chat Harbor Lane, they have essentially none. The V zone, the A zone takes up the vast majority of the neighborhood. The parcel, the large parcel, which I could share in that white, white shape. So having put Thad through his paces there, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask him to talk a little bit about the specifics of the plan and the sighting, then Patrick or Peter can talk about the house itself and then I'll go into the criteria if that would be acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
All righty, good afternoon, Thad Eldridge. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent, thank you. So as mentioned, we're looking at a five-acre site here. Quite a bit of it is wet. We have located all of the trees, many of the flags that were out there, we didn't want to disturb because they were in between marking all of the trees for the Conservation Commission. We wanted to make sure that that effort was completed. So yes, all the trees have been located. We have the existing house that's located atop the coastal bank, which is on top of the seawall to the south. And as mentioned, we're planning on retreating. We're in a low area of town and as you can see from here, everything in orange is the A zone, everything in pinkish-red is the V zone. And those zones extend well up into Chat Harbor Lane itself. This leaves us with an area, 14,400 square feet on this property of buildable upland. And it gives us an area that's outside of the conservation jurisdiction in order to site a house. So as mentioned, the proposal is to remove the house from the, from the bluff, restoring the bluff. When it was constructed, they actually cut away at the coastal bank in order to build the house. We'll bring in material, compatible material to restore it and then vegetate that. Meanwhile, a house will be constructed that meets the conservation setbacks, but as conservation no longer has a setback to floodplain, and you do, we are not quite needing that. But environmentally, this is the superior location. The canopy restoration, only a part of it is being proposed at this point with conservation because the view corridor that, that was on the plan submitted to you, that is being reduced as well. And we're going to return with the Conservation Commission to iron out those details. And there will be two other items, the, oh, three. There is a path that's being proposed going from the building site down to the beach. There's the driveway that currently exists in front of the house. We'd like to extend that out to the wall for future, future nourishment plans. And the driveway itself, in order to get to the buildable portion of the property, runs right through floodplain. As you see, it comes through floodplain, so because the end of Chat Harbor Lane is well within the floodplain, we can't really get out of that. Hopefully that does well if there are questions. If there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Thad. Mr. Chairman Bill Litchfield, if I might ask Mr. Hearn to speak about the house plans themselves?
Certainly.
Patrick, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Now, yes.
Okay, so when the McKennys came to me, they know of our work not only in Chatham, but in other areas on the Cape. And the concept was to develop a classic New England Chatham gambrel that could have been a house that would have been built perhaps even in the 30s, sitting up on a bluff. And so we were very conscious about materials and character and scale, and really making sure that it would really fit the context of the greater Chatham community as well as the immediacy and the site. So we have stone chimneys, red cedar roof, white cedar shingles to weathered gray, wood architect series, pella windows, proper shutters with pins and holdbacks, and window boxes, stone veneer on the foundation, and very much a cottage-like house that footprint is just a little over 2,000 square feet. So very much a house that's in character and scale, and what you would hope to see in other parts of Chatham. Next drawing, please. So as we just move around the house, this is the side elevation. Continue, please. We have an attached garage, which is part, a parcel of the house, with a, with a little mudroom entrance, as you can see in the side. Continue, please. This is the water side of the house, again utilizing two divided light windows to maintain proper solid devoid relationships and character and scale. Some simple shed dormers shown in the middle section of the house. The house is symmetrical about itself. And again, once the house weathers, it really would very much appear like a classic house from a different point in time in the community. Next. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Again, we do have the floor plans. Again, that's not typically in your purview, but you can see that on the right side is the two-car garage, and there's a kind of a living room, open kitchen dining area, butler's pantry, and a library looking out over the water. So a very compact plan that is just a little over 4,000 square feet on the two floors. Second floor again shows a master bedroom suite on the left, and three other family bedrooms on the, on the second floor as well. So total of four bedrooms in the house in its entirety. Next. And, and that's, and that's the house as, as it would appear from the arrival area. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Patrick. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing Patrick and Thad to join with me. Very frankly, and this is not a surprise, anytime I know that Mr. Hearn and his firm are involved, I feel that my life is made much easier because of the, the character of his work. As you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this petition has two aspects, not change of not from use, and also a traditional special permit for the floodplain driveway. But I would presume that you would like me to go through the criteria sort of jointly to save time. So I will.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. That's absolutely correct.
Thank you. So as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, it is obviously a challenging site. It is adequate for the existing house only due to the revetment. But for that revetment, the house would be down at Matican. But the house has existed for a half century. We've got nearly five acres with a total of 21,500 square feet of buildable upland. Yet with the current house, interestingly enough, coverage of buildable upland complies, unlike virtually anything else in the neighborhood. We are non-conforming by virtue of being located in, not just adjacent to, but in the coastal conservancy district, as well as having a buildable upland shortage. The proposed site, I think you can find, is adequate, and is actually far better for the reconstructed home. Coverage complies, again, unlike many in the neighborhood, and I'll get to that in the next category. The house is 34 feet from the sideline to the left there. But in fact, because we're going to have an easement going out to Chad Harbor Lane, we are, I haven't scaled it off, but I would guess somewhere close to 200 feet, 150 or 200 feet setback from Chad Harbor Lane. Of course, the only other house beyond us is 130 Chad Harbor Lane. Only 15 feet is required from sideline, and we're about 225 feet, give or take, to the nearest abutter to the northeast back on the, the straight or main leg of Chad Harbor. I should tell you as to site, in 2016, the current owners proposed to expand the existing house out there on the bluff. It never got to the zoning board of appeals because conservation had concerns. The neighbors opposed it vehemently. And in fact, some members of the, of the then Conservation Commission, some of whom may be involved tonight, found that moving the house back from the bluff was a sensible thing to do. The McKennys endorsed that. The neighbors didn't want a bigger house out on the bluff. The McKennys have the common sense not to propose one. And we feel that this site is entirely adequate. We will comply as to dimensional setbacks, except for proximity to the coastal conservancy district, and but we will be better than at present. As to compatibility of size, the locus is essentially unique. 207,000 square feet with two separate buildable upland area. The lot itself more than complies with the lot, minimum lot size by a factor of 10. But like all proximate abutters, we have less than 20,000 square feet of buildable upland. Thad, would you be kind enough, or Sarah, to put up that chart, which I sent to you earlier? Ordinarily, I'd hand these out to the, the members of the board, but for obvious reasons, I can't do that. But I think when we get into compatibility of size, it would be important to have that up there. While the, while the chart comes up, I will tell you that the house remains compatible insofar as there are compatible options. Thank you. Looking at that chart, we have total lot size, footprint, coverage of the total lot, which is useful to get a sense of scale, because we know that the, the size of a lot, even if some of it's unbuildable, it does help a project. Then we have the more technical issue of buildable upland and coverage of buildable upland. As you know, the coverage of the buildable upland is limited to 15%. So these are the houses along the south side of Chad Harbor. Number nine is 27,000, almost 28,000 square feet with a footprint of 1,360 square feet, less than 5% of the total lot. But it only has 7,500 square feet of buildable upland, covers 18%. 25 next door, 13,000 square foot lot, small footprint, 659 square feet, 5% of the whole lot. But it only has 410 square feet of buildable upland. So as small as it is under our bylaw, it covers 160% of the buildable upland. It's a factor of 11 times too much. 31 Chad Harbor, 11,900 square feet footprint of less than 700 square feet, but only 1,100 square feet of buildable upland. 60 upland. 37 Chad Harbor, small house, but only 290 square feet. It covers 267% of the buildable upland. 45 Chad Harbor, shows that my math skills are imperfect, because I couldn't calculate that enough, because it has no buildable upland. So the coverage is infinite. To be sure, it's a small house, but it's on a small lot. 94 Chad Harbor has 100,000 square feet, 45 under the square foot, footprint, three structures on it, covers only 4% of the whole lot, but it too has only 5,700 square feet, covers nearly 80%. 130 Chad Harbor, the house right next to us, the other house out on the bluff, the much larger lot has only 6,200 square feet, but it complies as to coverage. Then we get to 144 Chad Harbor, using the smaller area of the buildable upland where it is right now. Our house complies as to building coverage under the bylaw, covered house at 11.1%. If we relocate this house with a special permit from you, on a 14,000 square foot portion of buildable upland, which as you look up in that column is much, much larger than the amount of buildable upland on any other property immediately nearby, we will still comply at 15%. So we have more buildable upland than others. We have a smaller house than many, especially those on the more than 400 feet away on the north side of Chad Harbor. And the trees will continue to minimize, if not eliminate, the view from any other property. As to the extended increase in nonconformity, we have the two noted by Sarah in the hearing notes, proximity to the coastal conservancy district and lack contiguous upland. As I've said before, we have proposed to construct this house on the largest tract of contiguous upland in the immediate neighborhood, as shown on that map. That nonconformity decreases, as does that to the coastal conservancy district, currently located within the coastal conservancy district, eight feet into it, proposed to be nine feet away from it. That's a net improvement of 17 linear feet. There is thus no increase whatsoever in nonconformity. As to suitability of site, the existing house has been a bone of contention for nearly half a century, as has the revetment. It was secured by a superseding order of conditions. That is to say, the then owners, who interestingly enough are objecting to our proposal, the then owners weren't satisfied with a negative answer from the Chatham Conservation Commission, and appealed to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which overruled the local votes. That happens. The proposed site, if you grant the special permit, is far more suitable for the new family residence. It's been reviewed exhaustively by the Conservation Commission with extensive mitigation planting and canopy restoration, as that is shown, and Jen and Nick can speak to if you'd like. At least equally important, down at the bottom of that screen, where the revetment curves up to the left, comes up to the north, the McKennys will be undertaking beach nourishment. The house on the bluff will be removed. Beach nourishment will occur. The fragmites and the other invasives will be addressed. It is an absolute environmental gain for this site and for the neighborhood. As to scale, citing mass views and visitors, except in the water. Late Mr. Rakin is no longer with us to check it out. How is the current house is essentially visible only from a great distance, and otherwise it's largely obscured by the vegetation. The existing structure is no great prize, obviously. If you approve the special permit, you can do so on a finding that it is not negative. Now, this neighborhood has already had an impact on streetscape, as we know from prior litigation, which resulted in the change in the definition of how we look at streetscape views and visitors. But unlike the neighborhood, the proposed house will have very, very little impact on streetscape. Thad attempted to generate a computer view of what the neighbors to the north would be able to see, and perhaps we can, he can bring that up. But unlike those houses along the south side of Chad Harbor, we're far from the street. Those are the houses off to the left in the foreground. Those are all only a couple of feet from the street. We are proposing, as Patrick invariably does, to construct a, an essentially invisible house, which is unfortunate because it is so attractive, but it'll be behind the existing vegetation as well as the proposed plantings. As the compatibility of use, there's no change, except that it will become a year-round home because Mike and Lori want to live here as their home. As the adequacy of water and sewer, there is town water. The existing septic system, if it is a septic system, it may be assessable for all I know, but it is in or near to the flood zone. So another environmental gain comes here in that the old system will be recovered and filled. And of course, the Board of Health will review our plans for an upgraded system completely outside of the floodplain contour, where that is proposed to locate it. As to traffic flow and safety, the chair will read some correspondence on that, to which I'll respond. Noise and litter are not at issue, and utilities are present. As for the driveway through the, the floodplain, the chair will read a letter from the planning board. Interestingly, even though that was a very well-publicized hearing, no one objected, no one appeared to even express interest. So the, the planning board recommendation will speak for itself. There is, when you drove down there, you noted that you went over a culvert, and neighbors, all the neighbors, including those who support this proposal, are concerned about protection of the culvert. The chair will read a letter from the Conservation Commission indicating that this proposal can be, but also requesting a condition for protection of the culvert, which we understand. The chair will also read a letter about well protection. There are apparently some private wells in the neighborhood. Crawford Land Management won't be spraying herbicides, but will rather use the cut and swipe method, or over groundwater flow here is away from those neighbors, not to the home. Given this location and this project, that conservation would like, write a favorable letter on this project after multiple hearings, innumerable but appropriate requests, as well as site, because it speaks volumes, and the chair will read that. Again, the house will be behind existing trees, others will be planted. In perfect candor, there might be more trees on this property right now, if parties unknown hadn't cut down some and trimmed others, presumably to improve their own views over 144 Chad Harbor, but we can't undo that. We didn't do it. The environmental improvements from removing the house atop the revetment, getting rid of the fragmites and the other invasives, and most especially from the beach nourishment are benefits to the neighbor, the entire neighborhood. The existing property is already subject to a strolling easement along the beach, and Mike and Lori are committed not only to honoring that, but to working with conservation on nourishment. It's been a long hearing already, Mr. Chairman members, and the chair has considerable correspondence to, to read, to which I know he will allow me an opportunity to respond. So thereafter, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and that, at least for now.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. Okay. So first of all, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of these plans. If so, please indicate to Sarah now.
Mr. Chairman Bill Riley, on behalf of Harvey Ross and Eugene Farber, the owners of the property, they, they are clearly very much in favor of the project. And, and I think that the McKennys did a great job with their architect. I think Bill did a great job explaining the issues. And so we really hope that it's going to be approved by the board today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Is there anyone else there, out there else who would like to speak in favor?
I see no one else that would like to speak in favor.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we read the correspondence, but because there's so much correspondence raising doubts and that sort of thing, I'm going to start by reading the correspondence from the various boards, and the one letter in favor. And then Mr. Reed and I are going to have a little conversation as to how he wishes me to go forward. So I'm going to start with the letter from our conservation agent, Callie Harper, dated October 21st. The proposed improvements, and this has to do with 144 Chad Harbor Lane, and the associated event over 130 Chad Harbor Lane, and proposed raising of the existing structure, restoration of resource areas and property redevelopment. The Conservation Commission continued this report, this project, I'm sorry, to the November 4th work session. It is believed that the order of conditions approved was special and It is believed that the order of conditions approved was special and general condition. Then we have an email also from Callie Harper, name date, October twenty-first to Sarah Clark. As the staff representative to the ZBA, if you believe it's appropriate, this is writing to Sarah, would you please be willing to suggest the following in ZBA? As a conservation agent, I would suggest the following item for consideration, perhaps the ZBA decision could include language that requires the homeowner. To install the steel plates over the existing culvert to be verified by town staff prior to the issues. Issue was of a demolition permit. We next have a letter from Catherine Halpern, she's the planning board chairman. Here in the town of Chat, uh, Chatham on October thirteenth, she writes. The planning board at their September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty meeting reviewed the ZBA's request for comment. Uh, for the construction and maintenance of a driveway or roadway in the conservancy district where no alternative means of access from an established way is available. After review of this request, the board voted seven zero zero to send a positive recommendation with the condition that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material. Shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. Then we have a note, this is from George, George, Board of Health on ten twenty, she writes. I've reviewed the proposed plan, the health division will need detailed existing floor plans of the property for review to confirm existing bedroom number. In the addition, the proposed septic system must be submitted for review and permitting, variances may be required by the board of health. And then we have a letter, this is dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty, from George Metters. Uh, he writes, I reside at ninety-four Charba, Charba, Chad, Chad Harbor Lane. Okay, just straighten that up. I reside at ninety-four Charba Lane. My family has interest in two other adjacent properties at seventy-eight and eighty-four Chat Harbor Lane. With one thirty Chart Harbor Lane, we are the abutters closest to one forty-four. I'm the third generation of my family to own property in the area and a very familiar with this neighborhood. I'm writing in support and out the request by Mike and Lori McKenna. To abandon the house built atop the revetment and build a new and appropriate home further back from the bluff. This is exactly what was suggested to the current owners when they proposed to expand the existing house. And it is a sensible and sound approach. I understand that the McKennys will be undertaking beach nourishment work, which will help our entire neighborhood and that they will take appropriate steps. To protect the culvert that runs underneath the road adjacent to my home. Over my many years here, I have seen numerous changes to the houses along Chat Harbor Lane. And to our neighborhood, and this proposal will be an improvement. I hope the board of the field approves the request, which will not be detrimental and will be an improvement for all of us. So now we come to uh letters raising concerns. And uh, many of the folks are represented by Attorney Reed. So Attorney Reed, are you there?
I am.
Okay, very good. So I, I think to begin with, uh, your letter should be read. And uh, perhaps uh, you would read it as opposed to me, you might prefer that I read it, you come with what you would like. And then we can go on and ask the other neighbors how they would like to handle going forward. Maybe they want to speak, maybe they want me to read the letter, maybe they want to read their own letter. But I think I have to do it individually to find what they want to do. So let's start with you, Mr. Reed. Uh, would you like to read your letter of October fifteenth?
I, I'd be very happy to have you read it into the record if, if you wish. And I have only a couple of comments to add to it, I, I appreciate the time and your request of me that we not be repetitive and duplicate comments. Uh, so I, I will have very few comments other than the letter itself. Uh, with respect to the neighbors whom I represent. Uh, I have relayed the earlier message from yourself. Uh, and I, my expectation is that most would be, would be content with their letters being read into the record. I don't know if all the other members have had the opportunity to read them, I hope they have. Uh, and I expect very few, if any, additional comments from my clients, uh, those members who are, who are the neighbors.
Okay, uh, so you would prefer that I read your letter for you?
I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then that is what we shall do. Uh, this was written uh, again by Mr. Reed. And uh, the specific is David S. Reed. And he's an attorney in South Yarmouth. The letter reads, it's dated October fifteenth. The above titled matter, and this is one forty-four Chart Harbor Lane, is scheduled for hearing. I represent a group of neighbors to their property. Whose names and address are listed below. These neighbors are opposed to this application to replace the modest existing home with a proposed large and imposing new home. And its related improvements. First of all, the application presents a technical irregularity. The application purports to relate only to one forty-four, when in fact, the proposed development. Also includes improvements on the adjoining property at one thirty. The majority of the new driveway across the new district. And requires a special permit under bylaw section four, A three D is located within the bounds of number one thirty. For the board to consider approving such a use and relief for granted to record such decision. That property owner must join in the application to the board. Furthermore, since the application necessarily involves one thirty. The abutters notice also needs to include that neighbors to that property, which undoubtedly includes some neighbors not included in the present notice list. Provided by the assessors. Similarly, the application and its narrative discuss the relief needed for the driveway to the new home. That makes no reference to the alteration and extension of the quote unquote road across the lower portion of the lot. For the purposes of quote access to the beach, unquote, which also passes through the coastal conservancy district. As for the principal construction proposed, all of the house and its improvements are within the fifty-foot setbacks from the boundaries of the coastal conservancy district. As indicated on sheet two of the plan submitted by the applicant. Only an area of approximately one hundred square feet of land is fully outside of the fifty-foot setback. And most of that is on the adjoining lot, that would be one thirty, not the lot in question. The application seeks a special permit to allow these setback encroachments based on the premise that the existing house also violates this. Uh, setback requirement and is therefore pre-existing nonconformity. But we suggest that the coastal conservancy district boundary lines, shown most clearly as a broken orange line on sheet five of the applicant's plans. From which relief is now sought are not the same district lines from which the prior nonconformity exists. This is shown on sheet two with existing conditions. This we suggest are new nonconformities that may not be authorized by special permit. But which instead would require a variance. While both existing and proposed nonconformities involve setbacks from the conservancy district, they are not the same nonconformities as presently exist and offend. Different areas of the district lines. New nonconformities do not fall within the jurisdiction of the board as a special permit. Consider if you would, a simple example, so you attach sketch. Assume a small rectangle lot with an existing house located too close to the right side of the property. That pre-existing nonconformity may be dealt with by the board by special permit. Should the owner wish to enlarge or alter the house on that side. Because it relates to the existing nonconformity. But if the owner wished to span the house to the left side of the house in violation of that side setback requirement. It would clearly be creating a new nonconformity where one does not already exist and would require a variance. So too, the new house in this application would relate to setback requirements in areas where no nonconformity presently exists. And seeks to build in approximately two different district lines where no such nonconformity previously existed. These nonconformities are not, are new, not alterations of the existing nonconformities. It cannot be authorized by a special permit. The neighbors also contend that the proposed replacement of a modest house on the shore, not even visible from their properties with a large home. To be located at the top of the upland island and the middle of the marsh would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The bylaw criteria for the special permit applied for section five B. Indicate consideration of the adequacy of the size of the site, extent of the proposed increase in the structure or use in relation to the existing structure use. The suitability of the site in terms of the natural environment. And the impact of scale on the neighborhood, including views and vistas. As noted above, this is a challenging site. Where only something less than one hundred square feet of land is actually buildable outside the conservancy district setbacks. The present house with seven hundred and eighty-three square feet of footprint is all within fifty-foot setback zone. The proposed house of sub two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet of footprint is also one hundred percent in violation of the fifty-foot setback requirement. But it amounts to two hundred and seventy-five percent of the size of the existing nonconforming footprint. The lot area to be built upon contains fourteen thousand four hundred square feet of buildable upland. Where the bylaw requires twenty thousand square feet. Clearly, the proposed construction is substantially more nonconforming. In terms of the building area that offends the conservancy district setback requirement. And clearly, the contiguous upland area is significantly deficient in the area requirements of the bylaw. The visual impact is also significant. No one is claiming a view easement over the property, but the view of the property from the entire neighborhood is an issue within the bylaw criteria. The construction would involve the removal of perhaps hundreds of mature trees and destroy this area of existing natural habitat. The area, the proposed construction is presently a well tree, natural island of upland in the middle of the marsh. Virtually all of the trees in the area construction would be removed, as would those along the lengthy route of the driveway. And would be placed with a one large home. The visual impact on the neighborhood would be dramatic from a view of the pristine woodland, land bordering the beach. Woodlands, wetlands and marsh to one of a single prominent house standing out alone above whatever trees remain. The stated purposes of the conservancy district include the preservation of quote the amenities of the town. And to conserve natural conditions, wildlife, open space, or the education, general wildlife of the public, end quote. By preventing quote unsuitable development in or near swamps, ponds, bogs and marshes, end of quote. To permit the construction of this house, one hundred percent of which is in violation of the modest fifty-foot setback from the district line. That's the flood zone line, does not comport with the, these purposes and ought not to be allowed by the board. The construction of the proposed house itself also poses impacts on the neighborhood. Chat Harbor Lane is a narrow, dead and private way. The traffic necessary for the construction of the proposed house would have necessary pass necessity passed by each of the neighbors' homes. Both traveling in and out creating noise, traffic, and safety concerns for the neighborhood. To reach the site, these vehicles must pass over an old clay culvert. That permits the tidal flow into and out of the marsh within this and the neighboring lots. It provides the only means of daily tidal flow to and from the marsh. Should that be damaged by heavy equipment involved in the process, severe consequences would flow to the site and its neighbors on Chat Harbor Lane. And some, the neighbors contend that the site is not suitable for the proposed development. And that as proposed, this development would be substantially more detrimental to the new neighborhood than existing improvements. We respectfully ask that you do not approve the present application. So uh, Attorney Reed, would you like to add your comments to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Litchfield did an excellent job of describing the neighborhood and displaying the challenges of not only this site, but the other sites within the neighborhood. But your review tonight is not about the other homes, it's about this property and this home. But the fact remains that this is a substantial increase in the amount of building, which is in a place where it's not supposed to be. That is, within the fifty-foot setback from the coastal conservancy district, an increase of approximately two hundred and seventy-five percent relative to the house itself. Without even counting the pool and the other amenities and the driveways and everything else. Uh, for any construction where one hundred percent of what is proposed is in a location where it's not supposed to be. Because of the setback from the conservancy district. Uh, it, it's hard to justify at any argument that that site is suitable for that kind of improvement. And that that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Uh, which includes the conservancy district and its stated purposes. Those are not fulfilled by uh, the proposed changes. It may very well, in fact, it does offer some improvements from purely a conservation point of view. But that's not your jurisdiction, that's what the Conservation Commission is trying to dissent. Well, the most important point, I believe, is the point about the creation of new nonconformities. I believe that you may not, by special permit, authorize what is requested of you tonight. The construction of an entirely new home in an entirely different location from what presently exists. Creating nonconformities in different sections of the conservancy district line. Which for purposes of setback or similar to property lines, if you think of the, if you look at sheet number two. Of the engineer's plans, which shows the flood, uh, flood area requirements, the, the two different flood zones. And therefore, the conservancy district lines. You can see that there is no relationship between the existing encroachments into the conservancy district and the proposed encroachments into the setbacks from the conservancy district. And I therefore suggest that under the Dedrick case, which you're all very well familiar with for obvious reasons. Uh, that this is a new or additional nonconformity, which cannot be authorized by special permit and which requires variances. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much.
Okay, thank you. I will now uh. Take up the reading of the rest of the correspondence. So I will mention the name of the writers and then give a little bit of a time if, if you wish to read it yourself. Or to speak to it instead of having me read it, uh, please indicate to do so. So the first letter I'm going to read would be from Dawn and Mary Curtain. And their address is eighteen Chat, Chat Harbor Lane. If Dawn and Mary are in the audience and wish to not have me read the letter or wish to speak about it. Uh, please so indicate to Sarah now.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and everyone on the committee. We appreciate your time and effort. We would like you to read our letter um, to, for the record.
Okay, very well. I presume you're Mr. Kirk.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this letter was written on October nineteenth. And as I mentioned to you, it's John and Mary Curtain and family, eighteen Chat Harbor. Having grown up vacationing in Chatham, our family decided to establish roots here in twenty sixteen. Specifically in the quiet south Chatham neighborhood of Chat Harbor Lane. Although we may be the quote unquote new kids on the block, as a young family of four, we are committed to the preservation of this community and its precious natural habitat. As our neighbors who have lived here for over thirty years, uh, seventy years. These neighbors have not simply built homes, they build a community. Add in the three years that we have lived on the peaceful quote road off of Cockle Cove, end quote. As it was once named, we have taught our children not only to appreciate the history and ecosystem of this area. But even more importantly, to invest in its future for generations to come. As such, we have grave concern with the proposed development of an incompatible and unsuitable dwelling on one forty-four. First and foremost, the proposed development is on a nonconforming lot as it does not have sufficient contiguous buildable upland. Secondly, the proposed dwelling itself is also nonconforming as it is the proposed swimming pool due to its proximity to the coastal conservancy district. In addition, the size of the proposed dwelling, which is over thirty percent larger than the largest home on the lane. And almost a hundred and twenty-five percent larger than the average, according to records from the Chatham Assessors Office. Is disproportionate to the neighborhood and potentially hazardous to the environment. Most concerning to us is the negative impact this proposed development would almost certainly have on the surrounding natural habitat. Of not only Chat Harbor Lane, but also Cockle Cove and potentially Taylor's Pond. The vast removal of trees from a precious woodland and inevitable damage to the surrounding marshlands. And the unique ecosystems, all of which currently protect our homes from the ongoing encroachment of the sea, will irreversibly alter our community. Developers themselves have already acknowledged the significant impact this project will have on the marshes, woodland and wildlife. However, there's still no clear path to modifying in any significant way to alleviate these serious concerns. They have acknowledged the impact this project will have on the adjacent beach. However, there have not been significant discussions or proposals regarding responsibility for renourishment. What has not been acknowledged is the potential impact on the neighborhood that we have chosen to call home. The same which the proposed buyers would understandably like to call home, with all the responsibility that comes with it. The proposed development presents irrefutable issues within the protective bylaw criteria. And we therefore ask the zoning board to object to this proposal for a nonconforming house on a nonconforming lot, which allows for an unacceptable level of risk. To the very environment that gives this community its character. Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next letter I would read is from Ellen McKenna Hyde and Lois Hyde, and they're at 25 Chatham Harbor Lane. If you folks are out there, please respond. I'm not hearing anyone, Sarah, do you see anybody?
It does appear they're on the meeting. If they would like to speak, they just need to unmute themselves.
I'll take that as a no. So this letter was written on October 10th. My husband and I reside at 25, we front directly on the marsh across from the proposed development. Ever there was an example of a project that spoke to the zoning bylaws examining, quote, "suitability of the site with regard to the national environment and the impact of scale in the neighborhood, including views and visitors," end of quote, this is it. Although the lot is large, it is mostly comprised of conservation land, including marsh, bogs, woodland, and beach, with only a small section of the buildable upland that is not large enough by Chatham regulations to support a home of this size. We are situated in a small neighborhood comprised of modest homes averaging less than 2,000 square feet. Most have been rebuilt close to or on their original footprints. Our home is our year-round residence and is comprised of 1,350 square feet. We've lived here first summers and now year-round for 36 years. The proposed house is to be sited on a hillside at 144 with total power over the homes in this area, especially our small homes on the marsh. With this construction and that extensive driveway, most trees seen from Chatham Harbor Lane would be demolished and the housewood that would emerge would be starkly out of proportion to the neighborhood. To see an example, we need to look at the large gambell fronting on the Ridgeville Beach Marsh and see how it dwarfs neighboring homes. With regard to the impact on the national environment, this is perhaps the saddest part. The hundreds of trees on the 141-44 property have sheltered and supported wildlife, such as deer, coyotes, fox, hawks, turtles, and multitudes of migrating birds year after year. The loss of this habitat would have a devastating effect on this population as it's one of the last remaining continuously wooded areas bordering marsh and beach in Chatham. The trees have also sheltered us as they block the high winds from hurricanes and hold the ground that contains runoff from storms. This protects the marsh, which is now at risk from rising sea levels. The present structure on this property, which cannot be seen from our neighborhood, is the footprint of only 783 square feet, exists on a presently disturbed, non-treeted site. The proposed new house would be built on what is now a totally undisturbed woodland site. Instructing this proposed estate, complete with swimming pool, patios, path to the beach, long driveway into the property, will cause the destruction of countless trees. It will also bring traffic and a parade of heavy machinery that will be of considerable hardship to the neighborhood and cause damage to the fragile road. We are especially concerned with the culvert under Chatham Harbor Lane. This controls the flow of water from the large marsh into our smaller marsh. Should the heavy machinery centers, such as a cement truck, crush this old clay culvert, flooding of our marsh and homes could result from a surge of water from the ocean. It is unclear who would repair or pay for this damage and in how timely a fashion. Finally, this proposed house is an example of a larger problem in Chatham, where ever-increasing home size is changing the character of the town and threatening the environment. This problem has now reached our little South Chatham neighborhood, where we are faced with the prospect of losing our neighborhood character as its beautiful views and visitors and wildlife habitat are ever changed by a project that is out of proportion. We ask the ZBA to rule in favor of our neighborhood and limit the 144 development to something more in keeping with this area and its natural habitat. Next is a letter, and this is from Deborah and Timothy, and I believe you pronounce it Charla Boye, Charla Boyce, 9 Chatham Harbor Lane. If they're out there and would not want me to read this letter, please indicate.
I don't see them on the meeting.
Okay. This was received on October 20th, so I presume it was written somewhere along there, and they are, as I mentioned to you, at 9, Chatham Harbor Lane. We'd like to respectfully express our objection to the proposed development. To be clear, we are not fundamentally opposed to development on the site. However, we strongly believe that the scale and scope of this particular proposal is not compatible with our own and other neighboring properties and the natural resources of the area and will have an adverse impact. And considering this proposal in relation to the existing non-conforming house on the property, we feel that described new development will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood for several reasons. One, a great many mature trees are proposed to be removed to create the desired driveway and flanking lawn and wildflower meadow, large footprint house, pool, parking area, and view corridor. The overall effect will be one of clearing a small forest. This undisturbed woodland and no visible house is what we see when we look across the marsh to the west-southwest from our home. The thick stand of trees will also serves as a substantial windbreak from strong southerly breezes. The removal of so many trees would profoundly alter the look and feel of the neighborhood as we know it and love it today. Fundamentally, this speaks to the lack of suitability of the site in terms of impact to the natural environment, vegetation, and impact on neighboring properties. Two, the footprint of the proposed new home is 2.75-fold greater than that of the existing structure on the property, and the total footprint of the newly developed land would vastly exceed the current situation. The proposal is indeed a complete redevelopment project, intended to affect a sweeping transformation of the landscape. If implemented, it would create an open and spectacular seaside home with dramatic entry from the newly created driveway. Achieving this vision would, however, be accomplished at the expense of the visual character of the entire neighborhood. Moreover, the new commanding situated home would be one of twice the size of typical homes in the area. Three, both the newly constructed driveway and sweeping view corridor would encroach on the coastal Conservancy District boundaries, and the new home would substantially offend the 50-foot setback. To permit this proposal in its current form would seem to unduly favor development ambitions while undermining the purposes for which the district was established. Next is a letter from Tom and Mary, and their last name is D A H M S, I presume that stands 48 and 60, Chatham Harbor Lane. Are they on? If they are, please so indicate, Sarah.
Hello?
Yes. Are you, Mary?
This is Mary, and I have to tell you, I've been on Chatham Harbor Lane for over 70 years. I have watched all of this development. Please, please read my letter, but please also, I didn't add in the letter, which I'd like to add now, the water quality of the ocean is at grave risk with an additional big sewer system. Perhaps ZBA, maybe not now, but in the future, should limit the construction of new houses unless they have connection to the septic, the sewer system for the town of Chatham. Please read our letter.
I will do. This was written on October 18th. Our attorney has expressed our concerns regarding specific issues with this proposed development. In addition, we have several concerns regarding this development. We are opposed to, opposed to the proposed house because it's non-compatible with neighboring properties as its scale and overall mass will change the neighborhood visual character. The average house size of these abutting this property is 1,800 square feet, and most do not have lawns, swimming pools, et cetera. Bigger is not better, as the residents of Chillmark and Turo have recently voted. One, many of the current owners of Chatham Harbor Lane have sufficient property and resources to build significantly larger homes. When we all rebuilt or remodeled over the last 15 years, we chose not to do so. This was out of concern of the impact larger homes would have on the environment. We all chose to stay on Chatham Harbor and build in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The average homes on Chatham Harbor and the abutting Clark Meadows Way is about 1,800 square feet, whereas the footprint of the proposed 144 is 2,158, and sketches indicate two symmetrical floors or 4,100 square feet. This will be a very large two-bedroom home, assuming the house conforms to lot size and zone. This relatively large home will change the character of the neighborhood that we've all worked to create and wish to preserve. According to the materials provided by the developers, the visibility of the proposed structure based on footprint, location, tree removal, and stated height will be obvious. Many of the established trees that would normally block the structure from public view will be lost as a result of construction. They propose to replant a few smaller trees to the east of the home. These new trees would be very slow growing due to the site, which is an old sand dune with limited nutrients in the soil. Therefore, visibility of the proposed house will be an issue for decades. A conforming two-bedroom home of smaller size would be more in keeping with the other abutting homes on Chatham Harbor Lane and Clark Meadows Way. It is obvious that a large, non-conforming house full of people generates more sewage than needs to be filtered by the Leach Field, and in this case, there is a very short path to the marsh or the sound. Limiting the house size to conform to the 14,400 square feet of buildable land would make this home more compatible with the neighborhood. Our concern with larger homes on the coastal bank is that they become fully occupied during the season, and even with the best septic systems, there is a short, fast path from Leach Field to the ocean and marsh. Two, in 1990, we were defendants along with 50, 80 neighbors contesting the title to 130, 144, Chatham Harbor Lane in Land Court. As I understand, the outcome of this case in Land Court, a decision in 2001 cleared the title for 144, Chatham Harbor Lane, but left the title to 130, Chatham Harbor Lane, clouded. It has never been clear that the plaintiff accepted the final decision by the judge. Therefore, can the owner demonstrate clear title to 130, Chatham Harbor, and can he therefore legally give the described easement to the potential owners of 144? Three, as noted above, the northwest boundary of 130 is not clear, which has an impact on ultimate responsibility for the culvert that is vital for tidal restructuring of the marsh. The clay culvert through which tidal flow enters and exits the marsh is at peril due to the weight of construction vehicles involved in this development. Should this culvert be damaged during construction, it would be clear, it will be clear who and what did the damage. It is not clear who would be responsible for its reconstruction. Four, when the seawall to the south of 130, 144 was built, a condition was placed on the owner. This condition required the construction of the stairs to provide public access to the beach in front of the seawall. The map provided by the survey indicates that Chatham Harbor Lane ends at the property line, suggesting that public access to the seawall has been eliminated. I believe that a remedy needs to be found to provide access to the conditioned stairway. In addition, there was no condition on the owners of the seawall that nourished the beach to the east of the wall. This has resulted in the loss of at least 150 feet of beach depth that also has eroded what is left of a barrier beach. The loss of the barrier beach threatens the gentle tidal flow in the marsh with ever-frequent overwashing and potentially damaging the homes on the south side of Chatham Harbor Lane and our Clark Meadows Way. This also changes the availability of the marsh to serve as an incubator for all sea life in the marsh. Five, lastly, we remain very concerned about the destruction of the wooded area on this marsh, with only minimal replanting planned. Even the cursory reading of the hidden life of trees explains the real danger and damage that will be done along with the continuing changes due to climate change. Our primary opposition to the proposed structure is that it is out of proportion to the other homes in the area and will negatively alter the nature of the neighborhood. Thank you for considering these issues, and hopefully, you'll be able to help us maintain our neighborhoods. Then we have a letter from the Wardell family. We have Nathaniel, Joy, Tony, and Kimberly. I presume the Wardell family is out there, and they would like you to read this letter. Is that true?
I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the Wardell family on the meeting.
All right. This was written October 12th, and it's from Nathaniel Wardell, Joy Wardell, Tony Kendrick Wardell, and Kimberly Wardell Robbins. And they write, "We are writing in opposition to the proposed development. The lot is non-conforming, and of the existing 2,7600 square feet, only 14,400 contains contiguous buildable land. This alone should raise a very large red flag. Scope of what is being proposed is beyond reasonable. There are several rightways, right-of-ways in question. The first right-of-way runs through the Ross Farber property, leading to the seawall where stairs lead to the beach. When our family built the seawall, we were required as part of the order of conditions to establish access to the beach." Please refer to Calmough Mass versus Wardell. Also of record is another case, Wardell versus Atias. It is, oh, it's really supposed to mean meters, but the state has spelled it. This is a Land Court case that has remained unresolved since 1989. The ownership proportions of these properties still remain in question. The second right-of-way is to the right of the property, which leads to the jetties. Both of these right-of-ways are important, well-traveled pathways for summer and year-round residence. This is a significant piece of conservation land which should be protected at all costs. The scope of this project is not suitable for the neighborhood. The removal of trees, major road and culvert construction, future flooding issues, the vernal pool, and our precious wildlife are all major concerns. A major, a matter of deep importance is who has the ownership of Chatham Harbor Lane? What rights go along with this ownership? Chatham Harbor Lane is a very narrow private road with significant traffic. This property has been riddled with numerous problems for the past 40-plus years. They have and continue to be litigations and environmental concerns associated with this land. We sincerely hope every effort is made to ensure the protection of this very fragile piece of land. Please consider with due diligence before approving this crucial decision." And then we have a letter, this is from Lorraine Lee, and it's dated October 18th. Are you out there, Lorraine, or not?
She does not appear to be in the audience.
Okay. On October 18th, she writes, "From my house, which is located directly behind 144, I see marsh, ocean, open skies, many trees, more than 100 mature, healthy oak and pine trees. Over the years, these trees have been the natural habitat for many species of birds and other wildlife. Furthermore, their substantial and intricate root system hold the sandy soil in place, protecting the area from erosion and strong winds. The protection these trees afford to the areas necessary to preserve this already fragile area. Another concern is the need to use pesticides and insecticides to maintain the proposed lawn. These chemicals will adversely affect my well water. The proposed house of 2,158 square feet of footprint, which would be located on the top of the upland in the middle of the marsh, would become the dominant focal point of the area. This pristine wooded area would be totally transformed by a single dwelling. Therefore, the size and higher elevation of the proposed house would negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. I respectfully ask that the ZBA not approve this application. Thank you for your consideration." Okay, then we have an email, and this is from Steve Wardell. It's dated October 18th.
I am Steve Wardell, and go ahead and read the letter, please.
Okay, and you are at 28 and 32, Chatham Harbor Lane.
Yeah.
Let's see. It starts, quote-unquote, "substantially detrimental." The term just rolls off the tongue, just a day-to-day buzzword in ZBA matters. It pops onto documents and is as easily ignored as the hum of the refrigerator. Variance, another quote-quote. There's another term of note, it is a sort of euphemism for permission to do what is not allowed. Getting the go-ahead to do something forbidden is certainly questionable. Asking to ignore some of the ZBA zoning law commandments at once is certainly a grave collection of sins. It is asked of this board every day. As all of us are assaulted by bothersome petitions every minute of the day, we become a little jaded, and our resolve is worn down. It's so easy to just give the kid a cookie and get him out of our hair, but at what cost? Now every kid wants a cookie. In fact, it seems that every kid wants six cookies. If they don't get the cookies, the lawyers start in. Every project seems to involve breaking the zoning rules now. It is never just something small, never just six inches by the back fence. It is always six or seven big cookies. It always involves removal and substantial substitution of natural features and ignoring setbacks. The neighbors live with the results of these variances forever, forever. Suddenly, once golden years is spent handling aggravation and paying lawyers to argue with other lawyers, in part because some officials just can't bring themselves to say no in the face of higher the face of hired legal guns demanding yes, yes, yes. So why do we have zoning rules? To preserve history, to prevent our town from becoming shambles of bad taste and excess, to keep properties from being fire traps, to maintain privacy, to keep the citizenry healthy, to prevent rows of souvenir stores and water parks from popping up along the beaches, to prevent one neighbor from impacting another's property, to preserve property values, to keep people from ruining the environment, to keep where we live a nice place. The list goes on. If we have zoning rules, then let's live those rules and not feel bad about sticking with them. In my experience, purchase power doesn't necessarily go hand-to-hand with taste sensitivity and common sense. Sometimes it does, and it's nice when it does, but I am addressing permission to do what is not allowed. It is nice to be able to afford what you want, but one is not necessarily to be entitled to whatever one wants. We, the citizens of Chatham, rely on the zoning law to rein in this Ellis builder, preserving Chatham as Chatham. Variances seem to allow certain people to break building rules that others have agreed not to break, and often create substantially detrimental effects to the surrounding neighborhood. We have rules for a reason, and those rules should rarely if ever be broken. How many variances does the ZBA handle in a year? In the hundreds, I'm sure. How many of the variances are allowed? If the number is in the hundreds, then there's a problem. In regard to those variance requests which are denied, thank you for upholding the law as intended. To this resident on Chad Harbor Lane, one who was invested in two properties and enjoyed beautiful, damaged national scenery for decades, the idea of the substantial detriment of the wooded knoll sounds like a lasting permanent scour on a lovely continent. Why plow down the trees and mitigate that damage with little saplings, then cram in the oversized house on this bump? These little shrubs will never be able to hold the land together on a hurricane like the trees have. Build a pool, a lawn, a fire pit, and every amusement, a large part-time summer house seems the need, and this marsh would cease to be a natural sanctuary. This looks like a good place to mention that all of the proposed construction is within the 50-foot setbacks from the boundaries of the coastal conservancy district, all of it. Please don't let the marsh become water whiz. This neighborhood is not the right place for such an elaborate construction. It is simply a very bad fit. If this project in 144 is allowed to happen, the natural place will be spoiled. Even if a person places little in nature, town revenues derived from taxes and rentals will be affected as well as the downgrade. This will devalue surrounding properties. I admire the members of the ZBA and think that theirs is a difficult and thankless job. I, for one, will sing the board's praises if the rules are uphill. Thank you for considering my opinions in this matter. And then I have one that Sarah received today from Meredith Starr. It's dated October 22nd. "Our apologies for not submitting a more formal letter before, this is an email for today's meeting. If possible, we'd like to be added to the opposed list. As residents of Chad Harbor Lane for more than 50 years, we're opposed to the current project for many reasons. Our neighbors and David Reed have done an excellent job stating all the facts why this project does not conform and is detrimental to the environment and the ecosystem. Our most important concern regards the natural habitat and preservation of the tidal marshes, beach, and existing ecosystems that would be entirely disrupted by this project. The amount of trees that would be cut down would devastate the ability of the soil to withstand tidal storms and would pose a threat to our entire neighborhood. We are concerned for the present and for future generations. Thank you for your consideration." That was Meredith Beaton Starr, William Starr, Dorothy, and Earl Beaton. Their addresses are 74 Chad Harbor Lane and 76 Chad Harbor Lane. I don't think, Sarah, I missed any correspondence. Do you have any that I didn't read?
That is the extent of the correspondence.
Okay. So I would now say to the folks out there, for those that I haven't read their letter and would like to be heard, either because you're opposed or have a specific letter, this would be your time to speak and be heard. So please don't indicate a willingness to do that by signaling Sarah now.
I see no one else wishing to speak.
Okay. Mr. Litchfield, would you like some time to rebut these letters?
Thanks, Chairman. I appreciate that responding to watching tonight's debate, there is, I think, a fair amount of misinformation. There are some contradictions, either the prime gain or it's going to destroy the environmental ecosystem. I don't think it can be both. We're told that because the average house is 2,000 square feet, ours is incompatible because our house is feet. We throw in was and hope that something might stick, but I'll try to address the more salient points. First, having driven down Chad Harbor Lane, when Mike and Lori first became interested in the property, I had a sense of familiarity, and the more senior members on the board, I had the same, being placed hallway street is a regular stop for you, and that's because from a cursory review of the records at the registry, and I couldn't look at the ZBA's reasons, but pardon me, my number may be low. In recent years, no less than seven special permits have been granted on this street, and that includes number nine, Chad Harbor twice, not once, but twice, 25 Chad Harbor, 37 Chad Harbor, and 45 Chad Harbor, properties for which the owners are represented and aidfully represented by. I agree that this property and not those is at issue, but to suggest that we are attempting to obtain relief that cannot be or should not be allowed is, I think, a lie is given to that by the fact that so many people in the neighborhood have availed themselves of the very process which, for which our law provides and which we are seeking. Parties for 130 are included in the notice for 144. It is, of course, somewhat ironic, given the organized opposition, the suggestion would be made that somebody didn't know about it, and the owners of 130 are 144. The beach access for nourishment wasn't specifically referenced, although it's, we've told what conservation we would do, there's already a way there down to the beach anyway. As to the Dedrick case, which I think I and some of you may still think of, how like this isn't Dedrick, that issue was the category of nonconformity. Say, coverage where only a sideline deficiency exists or something like that. Here, we're nonconforming as to the coastal conservancy district, the top of the bank as well. Look at the language of the bylaw, even though it's fairly obvious from the maps which we wrote up earlier, there's all one coastal conservancy district. The bylaw describes the coastal conservancy district. It's defined as all of the submerged lands along the coast, standard here floodplain zones, plural zones, A, A, E, A, O, and V on the flood insurance map. So it is all one coastal conservancy district. So how are we nonconforming now? Proximity to the coastal special permit will still be nonconforming as to the coastal conservancy district, the same coastal conservancy district, although less so. Coastal conservancy district for the B zone, another for the A zone. As shown on the map, it's all one coastal conservancy district. As for variance and the need to, or the suggestion that we obtain one, both that and I discussed with, this with Sarah, and Sarah, as our central permitting coordinator, felt that variance was not required, so we didn't apply. That's in accord with the holding in the Gale case, which says that when a special permit is sufficient, a variance is an additional and unnecessary stuff. If I had more time, I would tend to back this unique property would warrant one. Do have a factual difference with climate aspects where not your purview, they were conservation. The purpose of our bylaws is very specific. One of the specific purposes is, quote, "protection of natural resources, particularly leaves, dunes, wetlands, and so forth." That is definitely going to be improved by the granting of a special permit and the removal from the house of the block. There is, I think, some irony doing exactly what was suggested by some of the neighbors and by the Conservation Commission said would be appropriate four years ago, and is certainly preferable to expanding the house on the block. Those of us who know this community are fully aware that the southern coastline is retreating, and the McKennys have the common sense to understand nourishment, but they're not proposing a grand edifice on the face of the revetment. There was a comment about this being a large home. Again, I have the numbers. It's not as to construction. We're far away from the congested area of Chad Harbor, and certainly the changes that the other neighbors did to their homes presumably affected the closer portions of Chad Harbor more than us. As to gross floor area of the houses at 74 Chad Harbor and 74 Chad Harbor are comparable to the size of this house. It was suggested that the Land Court litigation still involves 144. It does not, as one letter correctly stated. That was resolved in favor of 144. There's no, I don't know what it means when the letter says that it's never been clear that the plaintiff accepted the final decision. Judges make final decisions, and after 30 years, I tend to think they are final. Publish, public access phrased, "We are going to continue to allow public access, and we're going to improve it by the nourishment. We're not doing anything about any existing rights of way. Those that are, we will continue to honor." The last, one of the latter emails used in sort of a jocular fashion, substantially detrimental as a term rolling off the tongue. No, it doesn't. It's not a buzzword. It's an important phrase. It comes from state law, and it is a phrase that you interpret on a regular basis. You do not take a neighborhood whole. That is not what is at issue here. It may be that some people, although not all, some people in the neighborhood have had their doors knocked on. I know of at least one that that happened, being asked to write a letter of opposition. The fact of the matter is that variance, which is another term of note, as indicated in that correspondence, is, quote, "It's sort of a euphemism for permission to do what is not allowed. We're not asking for a variance." And in fact, there are circumstances under state law and in our own bylaw where variances are specifically allowed. You do not give out hundreds of them a year. You give out two or three or four, because most relief in a community where 80% of properties is nonconforming can be obtained by a special permit. I could go on at great length. I'm sure you do not want me to, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. Okay. I think we're now going to move to questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, there is a member of the audience who has her hand raised, and I believe she may not have been able to speak earlier on.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Excuse me, I was not, Sarah. Thank you. It's Mary, or Molly Curtin, from 18 Chad Harbor. Thank you, Chairman Nixon, for allowing us to be here. I appreciate how late it is there in Chatham. It's even later here in London, England. I just wanted to say, I am sorry that Mr. Litchfield wasn't able to be part of the Conservation Commission discussions or the meeting that took place without the neighbors at the site, but what I would like to say specifically, as the newest members of Chad Harbor Lane who have very happily adopted the rationale of living there as part of our responsibility of living there, as, as, as we're happy to do it, is what I'm saying. And in fact, it is a variance. It is not a extra permission. The extra permissions Mr. Litchfield mentioned were for removal of, for example, one tree. We have all been, every single one of us, subject to all kinds of bylaws and zoning and conservation on removing even sick trees, even trees that we're about to take down a power line, and we have still spoken to our neighbors to ensure that this was something everyone was happy with for a community there. Those are special permissions, and that's for one tree. What is being asked here is, in fact, a variance and multiple variances. It is, in fact, asking to break all of the laws that we all abide to every single day of living there, that we all agree to every time we pay a premium to live on a street like Chad Harbor Lane. So I don't appreciate anyone explaining to me, or worse, someone who has lived there for 70 years, and families, the Wardells, the Doms, who have lived there for 80-plus years, explaining to them why this is not only okay, it's beneficial. This is why it's beneficial to your neighborhood for us to remove basically a forest of trees that not only impacts your view on a minimal level, but massively impacts your protection from the sea. We live there, we agree to live there with the responsibility to take care of the area. No one is suggesting this not go forward. Equally, no one who is proposing this development has suggested any kind of moderations in their plan to make it a reasonable and suitable development for the neighborhood. I understand why they want to move there. I'd love to buy that piece of land, but I pawed a piece of land down the road that I could afford. If they're not willing to accept what needs to be done to protect that land and the rest of their neighborhood they would like to live in, then I would like to hear what they are planning to do to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Litchfield, do you want to respond to this lady or not?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I perhaps said enough. I'll be happy to answer the board's questions. If the board, during quest, let me do, I will.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll go to questions from the board. So let's start with Buck. Let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As an aside, and I don't know if anybody else experienced it, I don't know if it's my computer, I don't know whose it is, but the audio transmission in this hearing has been, we'll say, compromised. There's a number of times when I think we, I lost 15 to 20% of the words. Certainly, the worst was when you were reading, when the chair was reading Attorney Reed's letter, but that's just a comment. I also, as Attorney Litchfield did reference, I was a member of the Conservation Commission in 2016 when we were asked to review the expansion of the house that now is being asked to be torn down. So my question, I have two questions. The first one is, and I guess it's for Attorney Litchfield, on page 91 of the Town Protective Bylaw, Appendix 2, the schedule of dimension requirements on top of the page, where it refers to the minimum building and structural setbacks for the coastal conservancy district. It lists 50 feet. Is that correct? Is that correct, Bill?
That is correct. That is, for any current, any new construction, 50 feet is the required setback.
And does that apply to this application?
If this, we could not build this house afresh today, that is true of every case you, virtually every case you hear. We are in front of you because we are currently not only within 50 feet, we are inside of a coastal conservancy district.
I don't want to, I don't want to sound dense, but does that mean that the setbacks do apply to this application, or they don't?
They don't. Well, if the board...
Well, if the board finds, finds that it's not substantially more detrimental, the board can grant a special permit. When you have a house which is 30 feet from the street in an R40 zone, which is supposed to be 40 feet from the street, you can via a special permit decrease that proximity from 30 feet from the street to 25 from the street. If it's already outside of the ambit of the bylaw for new construction, as is the vast majority of property in this town, as we know, we didn't have zoning until 1954. So any lot that is nonconforming, and we changed, this, when this, this neighborhood was developed prior to zoning, but for many, many years it was R10, and then in 1981 it was changed to R20. So there are tens of, well, more than that, there are many thousands of homes which are on nonconforming lots or structures which are on nonconforming properties. That, that's what you do every hearing.
All right. So I, I want to try to simplify it. Is the underzoning this setback for the conservancy district, is that akin to, or how is it different to the Conservation's Commission's No Disturb Zone, NZD, or the buffer? Isn't it the same land?
Not, well, not in all cases. And if Thad can bring up the plan, he can show you there is an area which is the buildable upland area, consists of 14,000 square feet.
May, may we interject at this point? Are we, are we able to interject?
Sorry, at this moment, it's questions from the board members to the applicant. If they specifically ask you a question, you, you may interject.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, could I ask Thad to respond to Mr. Upson's question a little bit more fully? I have attended all of the Conservation Commission hearings, all of which have been virtual. So I'm, I'm a little bit unclear about that comment, but that, that's off point. Thad, could you respond to Mr. Upson?
Yes, Thad Aldrich here. So at this property, there's an isolated vegetated wetland. There's another isolated vegetated wetland located, both of these are located southwest and southeast of the, of the proposed site. And there's also salt marsh that encircles the proposed site. The one, the conservation jurisdiction is within 100 feet of these, where there's a 50-foot no disturb zone buffer. The Conservation Commission used to have a buffer to flood zone, land subject to coastal storm flowage. They no longer have it. There's only jurisdiction within that with limited performance standards. So in this case, we're proposing to be within 50 feet of the land subject to coastal storm flowage or the flood plain, but where most of the work is outside the 100 and all of the solid works outside the 100, with the exception of where the driveway has to cross through, but the septic system, the pool and the house are outside of conservation jurisdiction, but within your 50-foot setback.
And, and none of it is in the NDZ, is that correct, Thad?
Yes, it is, with the exception, the removal of the house.
Right.
The restoration of the bank is well within the NDZ, but that's a benefit.
Right, yeah. None, none of the new proposal is within the NDZ. Getting rid of the old is appropriately in the NDZ.
Correct.
So the last question, and I guess it goes to Thad, on page two, and I guess, is this, I can't tell by looking at the computer, is, is this page two we're looking at right now?
Yes, it is.
So there's a little, small, tiny section, about 100 square feet, right on the green property line between 144 and 130, where you have a note. Yep, that's it. Now go up to your notation box. It says something about 100 square feet of land more than 50 feet from the conservancy district.
Yes.
Why did we, why did you put that note on this print? Why is that relevant to this application?
So with the conservancy district, the permitted building, if, for new structures, would be 50 feet. The only portion of the property that's greater than 50 feet from a conservancy district is that little 100-square-foot bit that's within the side yard setback.
All right. Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Well, my concerns were, there were some serious issues involving, involving the variance and whether or not variances are needed here. But because I think I don't need those answered in order for me to vote, if I were voting, which I'm not, I don't think I have to prolong the conversation in that respect. So with that, I have no further questions.
Okay. David Thompson.
Thank you, sir. I have no questions of Mr. Litchfield.
Megan.
I have no questions at this time.
Dave Veat.
Yes, Dave, thanks. I would just like to clarify somewhat because a number of the letters objected to tree removal and talked about a large-scale amount of tree removal as part of this project. So I guess I would ask Thad, I, I'm, I'm looking at the notes on, on sheet four, excuse me, and it says, this proposal will result in the removal of 32 trees within conservation jurisdiction for the construction of the house and driveway. There are nine located within the easement and 13 located within the lot. Within the view window, there are four located in the outer or at six located within the no disturb zone. So is that, is, is the proposal is to remove 32 trees, is that correct, Thad?
Hi, Thad, you're, that's within the conservation jurisdiction and that number has dwindled down slightly with the conservation review.
Okay.
But we are proposing to remove approximately 80 trees that are outside of conservation jurisdiction.
So that's within the, let's call it the white area, the top of the knob, if you will, to, for the construction of the driveway and the house? Yes. Would that be correct to say? So in the, in the outlying areas, which, so the 32 trees is in, is within the area of conservation jurisdiction, which is the zone there, the flood zone essentially, is that correct? And I'm getting a little confused about the 50-foot setback, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, because we have one 50-foot setback for conservation and a different 50-foot setback for your.
Yeah, okay. Well, let me get to the, let me try to get to the bottom, my bottom line of this. I walked, I went out and walked the site again yesterday and I'm not, I'm not familiar with the practices with respect to the marking of trees and things. I guess I could see ribbons on any number of trees out there and quickly realized that I, I, I was not able to tell what those markings, that I was pretty much sure that didn't mean all of those trees were the ones being removed, but I couldn't tell what was what. I'm trying to get to, I guess what I'm trying to get to in, in, in my visualization of all this is, is how, how much of the, how much, how much of the tree canopy that's there, how much of the trees are there, are going to continue to be there and, and shielding the view of this house as you've shown in your, in your graphic that you have up on screen right now?
That, that which you see will remain. The area around the house and the driveway will necessarily be cut in order to remove, to build the house.
Right, I understand that. I mean, physically, they have to do that, but, but the, the surround, the trees that are shown in this graphic, it's surrounding the house on the, on the, on the outside of that cleared area, those trees remain in place. Is that, that's correct, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Also, I'm so sorry to interject, but there is no driveway in these photos.
You were giving a pants earlier. I will not allow anybody to interrupt the question.
But the photos are inaccurate.
Thank you. This is questions from the board.
Okay.
Not interruptions.
So, and then, and then that, among those trees to be removed, there's, is there, there's, in, in the conservation zone, is there's proposals to replace some of them, is that correct?
Yes, we started with a one-to-one, for every tree removed within conservation jurisdiction, there's one tree to be planted.
Okay, okay. And, and I, and the Conservation Commission has, has looked at this proposal extensively, if I'm not, is that, am I correct in that?
Absolutely.
And every aspect of it, they have put, done their review of it and, and it's, at least from their letter, it sounds like there's still some question with respect to view easements and things, but by and large, they feel that they're going to be able to condition this to meet their, their criteria. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
And just to share, the, the flagging that was there.
Yeah.
Was part of the tree inventory. There were 437 trees that were flagged, then tagged, completely inventoried by an arborist and then located and placed upon the, the final plans for conservation.
Okay.
So of that, a quarter of the trees would be removed, most of those being outside of conservation jurisdiction.
Okay, okay. All right, very good, thanks. I, it's the only question I have, Dave.
Paul.
This is Paul Semple. Let me continue with the graphic that we have there. Does that graphic show the site with the 80 trees removed from outside of conservation's jurisdiction?
That it does. The, it shows, yes, the trees in the middle here were just cut right out of it. The house was placed where it belongs. The other site improvements were not added to this as the, the house was the, the major question. And then we can look through and get the peekaboo views of the house through the trees that, that would remain.
So, so the other site improvements that you're talking about are what, the pool and patios and driveway?
Correct.
But the trees that would be affected by those have already been taken out?
They have.
Okay. And so you've got approximately 30 trees inside the conservation jurisdiction and 80 outside, so about 110 or so trees that are going to be coming out from what currently exists? And what do you, what do you say in response to the question of what about the protection that's provided by the trees that are existing there now from coastal storms?
Well, technically, as they're outside of conservation jurisdiction, they could be taken now and there would be still a substantial buffer of trees that would help protect adjacent properties.
Well, and let, if I could try to respond to Mr. Semple's question, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. If the, not only are there trees being planted for mitigation, there's also going to be, instead of the elevated house way up on the bluff, there's going to be a mitigation area there, very substantial, as shown on sheet three of five and also on sheet four. There is considerable mitigation proposed where that house is. And not that it, it is, I'm not sure how to put it, but the house itself is going to be a buffer from winds. The important thing for the, the coastal storm issue is the preservation and enhancement of the coastal dune, getting rid of the fragmites too, but that's less of an issue because of the nourishment that's going to be undertaken.
How, how do you respond to the overall concept, sort of a vague way to put it, but putting a house in the middle of an existing forest, which acts as a buffer zone? Why is that a, why is that a suitable location from an environmental viewpoint? Aside from what the Conservation Commission says, from our viewpoint?
We, we, we start with, we start with the premise of having a nonconforming property and a nonconforming house on it. As you know, the statute and the bylaw both provide certain allowances when existing nonconforming structures are present. So I think we can find that, I mean, the question you ask about cutting down trees to build houses is probably true of every single house in this community. There are, you know, the people.
No, no.
I'm sorry, was that from a member of the board?
Excuse me.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether I should continue or not.
Please continue. I don't think that, I don't know who uttered that, but it wasn't a member of the board.
All right. Thank, I'm sorry, Mr. Semple, I, I'm sort of like Mr. Upson's comment about the audio, I'm getting a little bit confused myself. How do we respond to the overall question? I think it is an improvement. There are going to be, there are 400 and some odd trees there now. 30 of the 110 will be replaced, others will be replaced as well. The majority of trees, something on three, in excess of 300 are going to remain. And we're also going to be doing the canopy improvement as shown right about in the middle of the screen. That has been lost over the years and we're going to be enhancing that.
Okay, well, I, I thought that that was in part the general question that was being raised by, by the neighborhood, so I wanted to have an opportunity to get your view on that.
It's certainly, it's certainly one of the questions and we think that we are dealing with that appropriately. You know, a lot of us feel that it would be fine if the town of Chatham, and I'm one of them, if the town of Chatham bought up and undeveloped more properties, but it hasn't done so. I think for the fact that we have here a nonconforming structure and a nonconforming lot, we're asking for relief, I think that on the whole, this is a boon and not a detriment.
Okay, I, I don't have any further questions.
Abby.
The only question I would like to ask is going back to that, the person from England, where is the driveway coming in? And, and do you cut down trees bringing that driveway in?
Thank you, Abby. It's not on the pictures or any visuals we've been given.
Did you get my question?
Sorry, me or the?
No, no, the, the board. I, I put.
No, yes. Has been, sorry, but.
Don't, don't, don't jump in here, you're going to be jumped, jumped out.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to Mrs. Van Zinkle's question?
Please.
Please do.
The driveway is, as had been shown on that plan a moment ago, the driveway comes in from Chatham Harbor Lane via an easement over a property, property of one, from one, currently owned by 130. Thad, can you bring that plan up, please, which shows?
I don't have it on my plan here.
Yeah, well, it's, it's shown, it's shown on page, shown on all pages, page three in particular, and it's also shown in more detail on page five. Thank you, there it is.
So are there trees being brought down? I mean, is that driveway, the driveway there is not existing, right, Bill?
That is correct, it does not exist. You, you perhaps walked in that way, depending on which way you came, but that. You, you perhaps walked in that way, depending on which way you came, but that, that driveway does not now exist. When you come past the culvert, as you can see up there, the top black area, black tri, or square, rectangle, there is a walkway down to the right to get to the beach and the driveway would be off to the left, as shown right there.
Are there trees being taken down from that driveway?
Absolutely.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
So do people behind that now have trees removed and now they see down to what? I mean.
Yes, they do.
We, the only person.
How that impacts them.
The only person, if I could respond.
Yes. Somebody keep, whoever it is, please stop it. Go ahead, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Metters is the only abutter near to the driveway. Mr. Metters has written in support of the driveway. I think it's important to take a look at the overall site plan. Thad, could you bring that up? Not the plan of just us, but the plan of the neighborhood to give you an idea.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Sorry.
The, thank you.
Sorry, it's going slow.
Um.
You can, you can see there, unfortunately, you can't see where the, the, uh, folks who have, who are represented by.
Where are those peeps?
They're not on this plan because at, at least number eighteen is sufficiently far away that it's not shown. The driveway is closest adjacent to Mr. Metters's house, which are those on the left-hand side of Chad Harbor. Metters family owns a series of properties and you can see, uh, three of them there.
And that's Cockle Cove.
Pardon?
Is that coming down Cockle Cove, Bill?
No, ma'am.
No.
It's coming down Chad Harbor.
Chad Harbor. No, I see it. Okay.
And.
That's, that's, that's another view of it. Cockle, as we all know, you come down Cockle Cove, you take a left onto Chad Harbor. The, that gives you an idea where all, where the properties are.
So all these people that I'm looking at now are the people that have sent in letters.
Well, not, not the entire neighborhood.
Many of them.
It's some of the people on Chad Harbor. Uh, I think Mr. Reed, well, he can speak for himself, but he represents nine, twenty-five, thirty-one, thirty-seven, forty-five and, and some on the north side as well.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thanks.
Y'all set, Abby?
Yes, I'm set.
Okay. Uh, so, does anybody have, anybody on the board have any more questions?
Uh, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, this is Buck speaking.
Yes.
Two, two questions or two comments. Um, one is Thad, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Those pictures you're showing, the aerials with all the green trees, that wa, that was probably taken when all the oak trees were, um, loaded with green leaves, correct?
That they were. That was September seventeenth of last year.
Okay, so it, it from November, December-ish until May, it probably would be an entirely different, uh, view of, of what the abutters, uh, would see or not see. The canopy would be severely diminished, I'm assuming.
It would. The pine trees that are out there would still be green and, and blocking, but the oak trees would certainly lose their leaves.
And, and the second point is, you mentioned that the trees were being replaced one-to-one. So it's possible that a tree sixty, eighty, a hundred years old is going to be replaced with a tree of what size?
Um, in the canopy restoration, we'd be looking the largest possible two or three-inch caliper, um, out at the, with the bank restoration, they could be larger.
So not everybody is familiar what two-to-three-inch caliber is, but that's chest high?
We'd hopefully be getting overhead high.
So that what's the tree? Maybe ten feet tall?
Eight to ten feet tall to start with and then, um, they would be watered. This is, they're going to have a land management plan implemented by Crawford Land Management. There'll be the three years monitoring with, with drip hoses over them to ensure that the trees take root.
I'm, I'm not picking on anybody. I just have experience with the way people replace uh, old trees with juvenile trees and, um, it's not the same. And yet it, it sound, it, to some people that haven't experienced it, it sounds like it's a good deal. Um, I have my own thoughts, but I just wanted to point those two facts out. Thank you.
Dave.
Okay.
Can I just, Dave, Dave Beach, um, I just wanted to touch on the, because there was some talk about the, the culvert and the steel plates and things and perhaps us conditioning, if we get to that point or whatever. Um, so I'm just wondering what Thad or Bill might have to say. I imagine they've had previous discussions with Conscom about this and I'm wondering what the status of that is and what, what's being put in our laps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Litchfield, if I could respond to Mr. Beach. Uh, we've had extensive, uh, consideration and review of the culvert. Uh, we don't object to, uh, the proposal for municipal inspection. We will be, uh, reinforcing it and securing it and we will keep, obviously keep the culvert open. Uh, it's in the best of interest of everyone in the neighborhood to have that happen. So that condition is not objectionable.
Okay. I'm stuck, Dave. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Uh, so I don't think, uh, any board member has any further questions. Is that correct? And Paul?
Mr. Nixon.
All right, this is.
But, Mr. Nixon, we do have four hands raised in the background from audience members. Uh, if you are willing to entertain any more discussion.
Uh, the only one I would perhaps is, uh, Attorney Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to respond, uh, I'd like to respond just to the, the questions from the board, uh, to, uh, Ms. Van Sickle, the, the clients that I represent, the nine households, are the households along the, if you will, the east-west portion of Chad Harbor that is coming in the first segment before you take the turn down towards this property. That's, that's their location all along that stretch. With response to Mr. Upson, uh, yes, absolutely. The fifty-foot setback from the Coastal Conservancy District applies to this project and that's what they're asking for relief from. They're asking to be relieved of the requirement that they be fifty feet from the Coastal Conservancy District for all buildings and structures. And, and if you look at, as you, as you did a few minutes ago, sheet number two, if, if perhaps that could be put back up, the plan that shows the floodplains.
Do you have it, Sarah, or would you like me to?
I do. I just had to get to a different screen to pull it back up.
There we go. Mr. Upson asked about that small blue area of one hundred square feet. That is the only area that is fifty feet from the Coastal Conservancy District and most of that is not even on this property. Because of that and because that's right on the property line, I would observe that not one square foot of this entire site is buildable by right. Not one square foot of this site is buildable by right that complies with the current requirements of this bylaw. Everything they're asking for needs relief, absolutely everything. The driveway, the building, the pool, all the improvements require relief from this board. This is not a case of a minor encroachment where just some of what they propose needs relief. All of it needs relief. And I would lastly renew my suggestion to you, my contention to you, that despite, uh, Mr. Litchfield's argument, that the, the, um, the relief required is a variance, not a special permit, that the Deterit Case says any new or additional non-conformities requires a variance. These, the area that's being developed is not even close to where the current non-conformities exist. These are new non-conformities. They are the same type of non-conformity. They are a setback non-conformity, but they are not the existing setback non-conformities. They are new setback non-conformities and cannot be permitted by special permit. Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Uh, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach seconds.
All right, I'll take, uh, the roll. Uh, Dave, how you vote?
Uh, Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Semple votes yes.
Abby?
Abby votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Deliberations. Uh, let's start with you, Dave Beach. Dave Beach.
Uh, okay. Um, well, um, this is a difficult one in, in many respects. Um, but I, and, and, and I, I feel like, um, there's been a lot of issues raised, many of which are not ours to be determining at this point. Um, I'm trying to keep, you know, um, stay focused on the issue before us and the, and the, and, and also, um, I'm considering that the, um, the Conservation Commission has done their work and they seem to be able to, um, go ahead with this project. Um, so if there's, if they're satisfied in that regard, I'm satisfied in with, with many of those aspects of it. We're taking, talking about taking a, um, a structure that is in the district, in the conservancy district, and replacing it, um, with admittedly a larger structure, but the larger structure, um, is less non-conforming uh, with respect to those setbacks from the conservancy district. It's outside of the district, but it doesn't meet the fifty-foot setbacks. So that's a net improvement in many respects. I think there's many ways in which the, and I think that the Conscom, by virtue of their, uh, ability to conditions, feeling is, feels like there, there's not, i- if certainly, if not improvements to, there are a certain levels of improvements with respect to the environmental impacts, um, and certainly not, not worse. So, um, I don't think, um, I think, yeah, I also think the house is a very, um, restrained in its design. I think it's a good-looking house. I think that, um, the, yesterday when I went back out there and I looked and I looked around and I looked through the trees and I looked through trees and I tried to see, um, uh, the neighboring, um, houses, if you will, talking about sightlines and things. And many, many of these neighbors are not looking directly over this house. And I don't think, I think that they're, I'm, I'm, I think that all, all said and done, there's going to be enough trees left that this house is not going to be standing out like it's sitting on the top of a knoll and not surrounded by vegetation. So all, um, all those considerations lead me to believe that I can find that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it can fit in. I think it can work as long as it meets all of the, the requirements of the Conscom and that we sort out about, um, the, the, the culvert and, and, uh, damage to the road and things like that. So that's where I am with it.
Paul? Uh, well, this is Paul Semple. I, uh, I think that we're looking at this, uh, really from a different viewpoint perhaps than the Conservation Commission. Um, that clearly, um, as Mr. Attorney Reed conceded, there is some improvement from a conservation viewpoint with the removal of the house down by the water. Um, but, um, it is correct, I think, to say that, um, this building is, is in the, uh, fifty-foot setback from the Conservancy District and does require, uh, relief from us, uh, in order to go forward. Um, and I see the tree removal as a significant problem because I think that although with the canopy tree photographs, it looks as if there won't be too much of an impact. I think there will be an impact from, uh, neighborhood views and vistas and that, uh, it will affect somewhat, uh, protection from the southwest winds uh, that we get in some of our storms that are significant. Uh, so, um, my tendency is to come out, uh, on the other side of this and say that I don't think it meets our criteria and would be substantially detrimental.
Abby?
I hate to keep piggy, piggybacking on them, but I do think it is more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and I think all the letters show that. And I think if we stepped into this area of developing land in the midst of all the conservation issues and taking back this and that, I'm sorry, I just can't go with it. Uh, it would not be something I could vote for.
Okay, Buck?
Well, I, I, I first have to say that I think the house is beautiful. It's, I'd, I'd love to own it, love to live in it, wherever it was in Chatham or on the Cape. It's a wonderful house. Unfortunately, um, the issue of conservation and, uh, the setbacks and whether it's this or whether it's that, we could probably discuss that for weeks. Um, but it does bother me. Um, bottom line, I am persuaded to support the super majority of the neighborhood in opposing this application in that they believe, the, the neighborhood believes that this project is significant, substantially detrimental to their neighborhood.
Dennis?
Um, yeah, I would go along with what Buck just said and I think he raised an interesting point. Um, for the six months of the year when the oak trees are going to be defoliated, um, I think you're going to see this house out at the point. Um, it's, it is a gorgeous design. I mean, it's, I think it's beautiful, but it's just in the wrong spot in Chatham and it certainly is more detrimental to the neighborhood. So if I were voting, I reluctantly would not be able to support it.
Dave Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't like the idea of a hundred trees coming down. It's old growth for Chatham, for this area. It's not like going up north, up Vermont, New Hampshire, whatever, but it's all growth for us and replacing with a tree twelve or thirteen feet tall? I don't go along with that at all. It is a beautiful house. Right house in the wrong spot. Neighbors, this is a neighborhood. The neighborhood is against it. I thought it was our job to kind of look after the neighbors. If I was voting, I would vote against.
Megan?
Uh, if I were voting, I would definitely vote against. I don't think that, um, it's appropriate for the neighborhood. It doesn't fit in, uh, with what the other neighbors are doing to preserve that area and that community, um, from, from the environmental standpoint and beyond. Uh, and I do think it's detrimental.
Okay. And so the only one that hasn't spoken is myself. I think in this case that it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And, uh, it's just too much of a project with the number of trees taken down. I agree, the house is beautiful, but I guess as Dave said, maybe it's the wrong place, wrong time, something. So, Mr. Litchfield, that would tell you there's one yes and, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven no's. What would you like to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, under the circumstances, um, we would prefer not to go forward. I wonder if the board would allow us the opportunity for a consider- I wonder if the board would allow us the opportunity for a considerable length of continuance, say, until your second meeting in January. I know you're already booked for December, which might enable us to see if there is a way to make revisions which might be acceptable, rather than simply withdrawing, which would be our alternative. And parenthetically, I would say that if we can't reach any accommodation, I would advise the board in advance so that you wouldn't have to book the time for January. I think January 28th might be an option.
Yes, January 28th would be, would be our second meeting of the new year.
What everybody thinks about continuance versus suggesting withdrawal. So I'll start with Paul. Which one would you recommend?
I, I certainly, this is Paul Simple, I certainly would agree to a continuance if, if the parties want that. They've put a lot of effort into this, but it's gone before conservation for an extended period of time, and I certainly would give them that opportunity.
Okay.
I would not.
Okay, here we go with the...
I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want to give them a continuance.
Okay, so that would be, you don't want to have a continuance, you would suggest a withdrawal. Buck?
Well, I'm halfway in between the two previous speakers. I would grant the continuance to January with the understanding it isn't necessarily the house, and it, it's maybe not even conservation, but the, the neighborhood threw everything at this project, but the kitchen sink. So I would think the applicants need to address and focus on the neighborhood. But I, under those conditions, I would agree with it, a continuance.
Dennis?
Sorry about that. I unmuted myself. I would be in favor of the continuance.
Dave Thompson?
I would, I would go along with that, Mr. Nixon.
Megan?
I would go along with the continuance, given the fact that there have been a lot of people who have, again, put a lot of work into this meeting, and I think there, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but a continuance would ensure that all of those readings were all part of the continued discussion, correct?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so I would, I would definitely give them a continuance.
Mr. Chairman? I'm, I'm sorry. Dave, did you call me? Dave Beach. I, I'm in agreement with Paul on, on that.
Okay, while we, Mr. Litchfield, did you want to say something?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Totally up to the board, we, given, I mean, the application fee is frankly nothing compared to the time, the investment that the McKennys have already made. So I think a withdrawal might be apt, and that way there'd be less time pressure. So we understand the sentiments of the board, and if we resolve things in short order, we can still be heard in the spring, early in the spring. But given, given the fact that there's a number of, of aspects here, we would ask permission to withdraw.
Yes, and I think that's the right decision, Mr. Litchfield. Okay, so Paul, would you put forward a motion?
Yes.
This is Paul Simple. I will move to grant the request for withdrawal.
Is that a withdrawal without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Yeah, I was gonna say, without prejudice.
Yes, David Beach seconds that.
Okay, so voting, Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Abby?
Buck votes yes.
Buck votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, good. All right, well, thank you very much, Litchfield. Okay, board members, I think we have some minutes to approve, do we not?
We have minutes of October 8th.
This is Paul Simple. I'll move to approve, approve the minutes as published.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, votes, Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Sample votes, sample votes yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, too. So let's see, where'd my cheat sheet go? I don't think we need to have anything else. We have to get out of here with the roll call. But first, Sarah, what time is it?
It is 7:17 PM.
Okay, so roll call of everybody, just say, you know, this is to end the meeting. I'll start. I say yes, Dave Beach?
Beach says yes.
Paul?
Sample says yes.
Abby?
Abby says yes.
Upson says yes.
Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
All right, Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson says yes.
And Megan?
Megan says yes.
Thank you all very much, and good night. Sarah, I'll see you tomorrow.